All this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. We have six members present. I'm going to skip the consent agenda because Mr. Urich usually reviews the minutes and I expect him here shortly. Would like to give him an opportunity to speak if he needs to on those. So, we're going to go into the regular agenda. Subdivision Platts, the Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Item one, RP 2324, first replat of Highland Range Estates, Section One, Block Two, to combine two lots into the ETJ, and one variance request to allow the current 20-foot paving for Edinburgh Road in lieu of the minimum 26 feet.
Good morning. Aaron Benoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Before us, we have a plat in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, just on the north side of town, off of FM 2288 and Edinburgh Road. The property owner has actually bought the adjacent lot and wants to combine them, and he wanted to do it through a plat process, so he's creating a plat of 2.5 acres. The two addresses under the 911 address in there, 121 and 117 Edinburgh Road. You can see there, just in the green outline is where those are. That kind of purple road, that's the FM 22 that's kind of on the south side, and of course OC Fisher is to the right for what water's left in there. So here is the lot. They're creating 2A, Lot 2A. You can see the structures there. I did just kind of a zoom in so that you could see some of the distances there. The frontage on Edinburgh is 380 feet. It's a 290-foot depth road, and it backs up to the right-of-way. Does have a drainage aspect just to the, kind of the northwest on its northern boundary. Staff is recommending approval for the Highland Range Estates, Section One, Block Two, the first replat. Is recommended a denial simply because our ordinance says there is a minimum of 26 feet required paving. The only conditions would be to provide the tax certificate, and if the variances is denied, then we would have the additional six feet of paving. They could do a financial guarantee, or again, could be a variance from the Planning Commission. Let me go back to, as you can see, Edinburgh really does not go much further south. That's where the State Park starts. There is a road, and it's just barely visible because I had such a zoom out, and I forgot what that road is right there. But there's a road that connects there, comes in and turns. You can see most on this side are mostly already have homes. This lot has not been developed, but these have been developed down here, and the owner is adjoining those two. With that, do you all have any questions for me? It's classified as a local road under our subdivision ordinance, and so it has lots and lots of right-of-way.
No, I'm sorry. No, the road coming in on 2288 is Glasgow.
Glasgow.
Oh, Glasgow, okay.
It's on the plat.
Yeah.
Could you go back to the site view? So, is State Park land also to the north?
I believe it is to the north and to the east there, yes. I believe that is, because that's that one road that kind of goes back before it goes down into where the condo.
So we've got a section of road that doesn't look like it impacts more than half a dozen lots at most. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it is built to 20-foot paved with asphalt, yes.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address or single member district.
Good morning. Russell with SKG Engineering. We would ask for your approval of the plat and of the variance. As you kind of saw on the map, it really is bound even to the south by the OC Fisher reservoir land. So really, any development or continuation of that road to the south is very, very minimally possible at all, and this area is pretty well fully developed out. They're taking two lots, combining it into one, so we're really actually decreasing the potential for another home there. And so, you know, this area is outside of the city limits. They have an agreement for city water, so the likelihood of annexation in anybody's reasonable future is very not likely, so we would just kind of ask for your approval of the variance for the street width. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Russell? Thank you, Mr. Gully.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or emotion, please.
Make a motion to approve with the approval of the variance. I feel like with the age of that development and just in the sole fact that that really is not a through road, it's not going to impact the homes around it, I feel like 20-foot is completely adequate for the subdivision.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented, granting the variance on the road width to remain at 20 feet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven-zero. All right, I'm going to jump back to the consent agenda. The Commission may request for consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the staff. The Commission will accept public comment on any item on the consent agenda in one hearing. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. The only items on the consent agenda are the meeting minutes from June and July. Anyone wish to speak on those items? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Does anyone have corrections or comments that they want to make on the minutes? All right, I'll take a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So we're going to have six-zero. Mr. Self has abstained since he wasn't present. Okay. Jumping back into the regular agenda, subdivision Platts. Item two, RP 2325, first replat of Lakeview Edition, Block 22, to create two lots and a variance request for no curb and gutter along Bowie Street.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry, Planner. This is the Lakeview Edition, Block 22. It is .264 acres in the RS1 zoning. They are creating two lots out of the one to put houses on each lot. It is in District Two, Tom Thompson, in the Lakeview neighborhood. This is the plat. They're, like I said, creating the two lots. The houses will be facing Bowie Street. This is, they have requested a variance to not improve Bowie Street. By improvement, I mean curb and gutter. The width matches our minimum. Actually, I think it's a little bit more than the minimum. But this was a picture to show the, there is no curb and gutter. Staff is recommending approval of the plat with the conditions to provide a tax cert to illustrate their proposed water and wastewater service connections, and at the moment to do the required improvements on Bowie unless you approve the variance request, which staff does recommend approval, in which Item Three would be removed as a condition. If there's any questions.
All right. Anyone have questions for the staff? All right, we're going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address or single member district before you begin. All right, I'm going to close public comment. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Approving the variance, which will remove Item Three.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, striking Item Three and granting the variance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven-zero. Item Three, RP 2326, first replat of Saddle Club, Section Three, Block One.
Good morning. Sherry Bailey, Principal Planner. This is a request to combine two lots in the Saddle Club Edition. It's in Section Three, Block One. The total acreage will be just under an acre. The zoning is RS1, single-family. And the lots, as you can see, is the smaller one has a house on it, and then the lot to the west of that is the larger lot. The applicant is wanting to build a poolhouse and eventually maybe a small storage shed. It is in District One, Mr. Hebert's district, and it's in the Country Club neighborhood. We did have two people.
I'm sorry. I don't think it's in the Country Club neighborhood.
Is it south of? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
It's right on the end, so I'm never really sure.
It's west of Knickerbocker.
Yeah. We did send out 20 notification letters. We received one in support. We received one in opposition that was outside the area, and then we did see, receive one, and it is the one that's the closest, that bottom star, and the gentleman did send in his comments, and I'll let you read them. Basically, he was concerned about his view shed, and if a large storage unit was built there, a shop was built there, it would block his views. With that, staff is recommending approval of the residential replat. We have three conditions: provide a tax certification, install necessary utility service connections if needed, and submit a drainage study and make required improvements. Are there any questions?
Do you mind going back to the overview again, please?
Surely. There?
I think forward one. So the lot that they've, the larger lot that they're combining with the lot that has the house on it.
Yes.
Is zoned RS1. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
But it does not preclude having a personal use of maintenance storage.
Yes, ma'am.
And we've granted that, yeah.
Okay.
It appears that the home is actually on the second lot, like part of it.
It is, yes. And that's one of the reasons they're combining it. They're going to build a pool and a poolhouse.
Essentially, an expansion of their existing home.
Right, yes.
Okay. You provided the notes on the opposition. Were there written comments from both or just the one?
Just the one.
If I recall. If I recall correctly, because I vaguely remember when that home and that lot were sold to the current owner, on the lot that's in question, you've got the dirt portion that's up towards lowest, and then it drops off the back, which is unbuildable area into that canyon.
Significantly, yes. It does.
So really, like whatever structure would be put up would not really go past the rear of the existing home, essentially.
That's correct.
I mean, is that not another lot technically?
Pardon?
Is that not another lot technically?
What?
The one they're combining?
The one they're combining, yes.
So I mean, technically, they could sell it, and someone could build another house.
Well, at one point in time, it was for sale, and this owner at that point bought it.
It just kind of, I understand the other homeowners.
Right.
Not wanting something to build there.
A large two-story home could have been built there.
Somebody could build a house. That would block his view anyway.
Hundred percent.
Do you mind rolling forward to the opposition?
Certainly.
Can everyone read that? Okay.
Does the applicant have any idea in like size of storage unit or anything, just so?
I don't believe so at this point. They haven't really, the poolhouse is what they're really wanting.
Okay. I think I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward and state your name, address, single member district.
Russell with SKG Engineering. You're on the right point there of discussing, if this was to remain a separate lot, then they could build a home, build a garage, build a poolhouse, build a large amount there to, you know, lot coverage ratio per the ordinance. So, we believe that by combining these two and already having a home on that existing lot, the view shed is, that could be constricted or restricted by this is potentially significantly less than if there was a separate lot and home built there. So, we don't really see the, how that really applies in this situation. The recommendations, install necessary utility service connections, those are already in place. When this was platted, they had the obligation to install water and sewer services, so we can either remove that or I guess consider that technically met, and then submit a drainage study. This is under an acre, so because it's under an acre, it's exempt from the stormwater ordinance, plus there was a drainage study done when this subdivision was platted. So, we would either consider that met or it doesn't meet the requirements for a stormwater drainage study. So we'd ask, really to simplify it, just have Conditions Two and Three either removed or considered met, and would be happy to answer any other questions.
I have one question, Russell. What are the plans to enclose the lot in any way, like fencing or anything like that?
We don't know the specifics of that. I believe when you put a pool in, you're obligated to fully fence around the pool from the liability and protective standpoint, and I think Brittany pointed out, the back part of that lot does fall off, so you know, there's some limitations on how far to the back they could go. But there again, if this remained as a standalone lot, they could fully fence it per the fencing ordinance, and I guess the, when you look at the maximum size of what this storage building could be, I believe in RS1 zoning limits the size of that to 50% or 1,000 square feet of the, of what the, of the footprint of the main structure on the property. So, there is kind of a size limitation on what that structure can be, which would be 50% of the footprint of the existing home on the lot.
I would just add, I think staff is comfortable removing Conditions Two and Three.
Okay. Just going to ask you.
The drainage is subject to the stormwater standards anyway, so even if you remove it, in the rare case that the stormwater drainage standards would still apply, which I think Russell's right, they would not in this case, they're going to have to do that anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're comfortable removing those two.
Okay. So anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take a motion.
Make a motion to approve removing Item Two and Three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented, striking Items Two and Three from the staff notes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven-zero. Item Four, RP 2328, first replat in Block 10, and second replat in Block Nine of JNO, ABE March subdivision, and a variance request to allow no paving on an unnamed street extending to the west property line.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry again, Planner. And this one is 8.569 acres in the RS1 zoning. It is the first replat, replat of Block 10 and second replat of Block Nine in Tom Thompson's, I cannot talk this morning, Tom Thompson's District Two, Lakeview neighborhood. The variance request is for, this, we have this right here labeled as a street, and they are requesting to not have to create that portion of the street, which, if you notice, Lakeview's Little League baseball fields are kind of encroaching in it anyways. This is the plat. I tried to turn it so that way it would match the picture. But it is creating those two lots. And that is, like I said, the unnamed street. I went out and took a picture, and it is, again, not really a street. Nobody drives through it or anything. There were 26 notices mailed out. We received two in favor, zero in opposition. And the staff does recommend approval of the plat and also the variance. But I think I put that on the, oh, I do say, and the variance request to not require the development. They would need to provide a tax cert and also turn in plans with the proposed water and wastewater service connections. A drainage study is required. It is over an acre, and they do need to coordinate with TechDOT for access, I'm going to go back, along Armstrong, as that property right there might not have one, or actually, I think it does right here, but they'll have to coordinate that and provide proof to the city. And with that, if there's any questions.
Could you go back to the site map, please?
This one or?
Roll back a couple more, if you don't mind. Right there's good.
Okay.
So this unnamed street, it doesn't look like any of the properties that are abutting that street or using it for access in any way.
Correct.
But it's owned by the city.
Correct.
So is the city required to maintain?
If it was a street, I don't know the answer to that question. I would believe so, yes.
Okay.
There was some discussion of possibly abandoning it.
I think that makes sense, given the circumstance here. I know that's not part of this case, but that would be.
Especially with.
Now I see the, you can see the little flag of the field there that's caught in the right-of-way.
Yep.
Looks like right field goes into the alley.
Where those utility poles are too. I mean, that would make it extremely hard to pave anyway. Wouldn't meet any standard width.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? All right, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case? Please come forward.
Good morning, Russell with SKG. Yes, we kind of had the same discussion on what do you do with the street right-of-way. SAISD has been so gracious to utilize it, maintain it, and kind of have some outfields on it. So, yeah, logically, do you mess with it or just leave it alone, and we have other problems and more important things to worry about, maybe the case. So we would ask for your approval of the variance on that. And then, for the condition for, as the imagery, if you look real close, there are two entrances that were constructed by TechDOT whenever they reconstructed Armstrong. One serves that existing house.
The flag lot or?
Well, the house is the smaller, the inside of the, I don't know how to operate. The top one? There we go. There's an entrance here that serves that existing house, and then there's another entrance right about there that would serve the flag lot, so.
Got it.
There again, we believe, we don't need to go to TechDOT. We have entrances installed by TechDOT onto both of those two lots, so we can leave it, but maybe consider it met or remove it, and it simplifies a lot of coordination with TechDOT. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Russell? Do you mind rolling forward to the recommendation so we can see the notes? Yep. Thanks, Russell. Anyone else wish to speak?
Governor Bates sitting here. TechDOT will review not only existing access, but proposed access relative to any changed use of the property. So, the coordination with TechDOT is required, whether or not they permit additional access or close existing access. So right of way, they have complete authority over it.
Okay, so you're saying we cannot remove Note Four?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment and take thoughts or a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven-zero. All right, Item Five has an accompanying rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment case with it. So I'm going to read both of them in. RP 2329, replat of the east half of Track Nine of the Forest Park Edition, located at 2716 Forest Park Lane, or excuse me, Avenue. And then, rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. The City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Item Three, Z 2309, 2718 Forest Park Avenue. The addresses don't match up. Is it 16 or 18? 18.
18, yes.
So the replat is for 2718, not 2716. And then, Z 2309, 2718 Forest Park Avenue, request a rezone from single-family residential to two-family residential located at 2718 Forest Park Avenue. Ms. Bailey.
Thank you. Chairman's dribbling. As you indicated, this is a plat and a rezoning. The plat is just under a half an acre at the present time. It's .4591 acres. They are wanting to make two lots. Each of those lots will be 50 by 200 feet each. The zoning is RS1, and they are proposing to zone it RS2 in order to build a town home or duplex on that lot. It is in District Two, Tom Thompson's district, and it is in Angelo Heights neighborhood. Here is a picture of the plat. As you can see, it's divided equally to form those two lots. The conditions on the plat would be to provide a tax certification, to install the water main and services to each lot, and to install sewer and main and required services for that lot. This is a picture of what the only physical structure that is on the lot, that structure will be removed in order to build the duplex or town home. And staff is recommending approval of the request to rezone from RS1 to RS2 for a twin home construction and to remove the mobile home. And staff also recommends the approval of the residential replat for the east half of Track Nine, Forest Park Edition, to provide tack, the conditions, provide tax certification, extend the sewer main and provide service connections as necessary, and extend the water main and provide service connections also. And are there any questions?
Could you also present the zoning case, please? The rezoning case?
Certainly. The rezoning on this piece of property is, they're requested in R2, and as you remember, RS1 and R2 are very closely related in our zoning ordinance. Right next to, or two doors down, there's Neighborhood Commercial in the area, and then if you go north of this piece of property, there is RS3, quite a large area of RS3. I didn't get it on the plat, but there's also some R2 that is down and to the east of this property. It is a transition area and has a number of different types of uses within that area.
The lots that are zoned RS3, are they developed RS3, or are they? The lots that are zoned RS3, are they developed RS3 or are they developed RS1?
It's a mix. Some of them are RS1. A couple of them appear to be RS2 when I drove through the neighborhood.
Okay. And you said there are other RS2 zoned lots?
It's, they're down and a block over to the west, yes.
Okay.
East.
All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right, we're gonna open it up for public comment.
Erica Wildy with Carter Fintrist Engineering. And staff did a pretty good job explaining it, so we just ask that you approve as presented.
Thank you, Erica.
Any questions?
Anyone have questions for her? Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm gonna close public comment and take thoughts or a motion. We've got two motions that need to be made here.
I move to approve both as presented.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve both cases, the subdivision plat and the rezoning as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven, zero on both. All right. The next case is similar. It has an accompanying...
Thank you.
Rezoning.
Which, these are two, the notice is two different streets. This is Edgemont, this is Edgewood.
Okay.
And I think it is Edgewood.
Okay, so item six is RP 2330, first replot of Concho Development Edition, Section One, Block Two, located in the 3,400 block of Edgemont?
Edgewood.
Edgewood. Edgewood Drive. And then under rezonings, item one, Z 2310 and CP 2303, 3,480 Edgewood. A request for a comprehensive plan amendment from Commercial to Neighborhood Center and rezoning from Light Manufacturing to RS3 zoning for the property located at 3,480 Edgewood.
Okay, good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. So this is both for a plat and a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment. And it is on these three lots right here. And it is 1.800 acres. They are requesting to move from Light Manufacturing to RS3. And they are also requesting for the comprehensive plan to be from Commercial to Neighborhood. The replat would be taking those three lots and making them 15 lots in order for town homes. And I have provided what some of the town homes will look like. And it is in District One, Tommy Hebert, in the Glenmore neighborhood. And I also wanna say that this right here is the Air Force Base. So it will back up into the Air Force Base, or not into, but with the Air Force Base. This is the plat with the 15 lots. And then this is the zoning and the comprehensive plan. At the moment, it is Light Manufacturing. On the left, you'll see all around is the Light Manufacturing with RS1 up here. We do believe that it will make kind of a buffer from Residential and Light Manufacturing. And then on the right is the Vision Plan. You can see that it's Commercial, and they are requesting Neighborhood, which is the same as the yellow above. We mailed out 15 notices. We received zero in favor. We received one written opposition, but they didn't make any notes. And it is, and actually, that star, it should be for this one.
On the corner?
The corner.
Okay.
So staff is recommending approval on the zoning request and the comprehensive plan amendment. And then staff is also recommending approval on the plat, providing a tax cert. A drainage study will be required. They'll have to submit plans proposing the installation of the sewer main and the water service connections. And then the plat is in condition of the zoning passing, City Council. With that, is there any questions?
Nope.
Anyone have questions for the staff? All right. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address or single-member district.
Edward Guthrie. I live in 125 Delwood. If I'm understanding this correctly, the red-top building in the picture is the fire station number four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I oppose this development, zoning changing for several reasons. Security factor, 'cause it does back up to the base fence. First most, the Arroyo drains through there, and when we do get rain, it's quite heavy and ponds right there. So I oppose this zoning change. We don't have no twin townhouse, zero lot line anywhere in the neighborhood, and we've been there for 50 years. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Jelly Row. I live at 3129 Edgewood Drive, been there for 45 years. I've watched Edgewood. Eight new houses since I've been there, and 45 years have been built toward the cutoff is for the field that you wanna change. Norwood Drive goes this way, and there's 20 new houses built on that over the 45 years. There's one house being built right now, and that'll be the last part of the land on that Norwood Street that would have any residential. They've just raised our taxes, as you know, and now they wanna change the, for townhouses in that area. Have you seen that lot? 45 years, that lot has been cut maybe 10 times in the 45 years I've been there. Right now, it looks like a cornfield in Iowa. The grass is so high. It's terrible. But if you cut the thing down and change it to our housing, the way we, you know, the single-family housing, or whatever you wanna call it, where what we live in, you can get probably four houses on this one area and one on the lot where the, two probably on the lot where the, where the fire station is. Otherwise, you're just gonna lower our, not our taxes, but you're gonna lower the area that we can sell our houses for. I mean, it's, you know, 45 years should call for something, so anyway. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Erica Wildy, Carter Fintrist Engineering. If we weren't to do this, and it would say Light Manufacturing, there's no telling what would go in there. You all have pictures of the type of product the applicant provides. It is not low-income housing. It's also a good spot to have housing for the base. And I believe it's a good transition from Light Manufacturing to Residential. I ask that you approve this, presented, as presented by the city. And I'm here for any questions.
Anyone have questions for Erica?
Nope.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. This, if, do you mind going back to the, the site map that shows the overview? Yep, that'll work. This is a, this is a tough case for me. I understand the concerns of the neighbors. But I think that the zoning change that's requested is of benefit to this neighborhood. I don't think that industrial use in this area would benefit the neighborhood to the north.
I agree.
The lots are shallow for development, as I can see it, which makes industrial development difficult. But we can't prevent people from developing lots in this community. I've had a similar circumstance on my street, where neighbors were upset about a vacant tract of land being developed. No one wanted it developed. But we don't have a right to prevent someone from building on a vacant lot. So I, I understand the area. I understand this location. And I think that while I'm not crazy about the density, I think that more intense residential development in this area is, is better than the Light Manufacturing zoning that it's got.
What could be done under Light Manufacturing?
Shop space.
Like a welding shop or something?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Lot of noise nuisance.
I mean, I kinda agree with you. This is a good...
Transition?
Would be better transition.
Yeah.
Well, and two, we have to take into consideration if we, I guess it would be southwest, would be the new apartment complex that got built there too, you know?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it is a transitional area. The lack of base housing is definitely an issue. The lack of nice, affordable rentals is an issue. You know, the amount of military folks that come to San Angelo that aren't gonna be here long enough to purchase and want something convenient for their family, et cetera. I mean, this provides exactly that, so.
Yeah, there's nobody that don't really wanna build a larger or decent-sized home across on that street either.
If you go further up, the homes that are on that street, the backyards are extremely shallow. And you can literally, I mean, all you see is the base over like the six-foot fence that are existing there.
Yeah, to the south is all industrial too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not...
There's an alleyway between the Presidential Home and the base fence.
Yes, sir.
But if you put this at zero lot line, that means there's gonna be no setback on the street. So where are they gonna park it?
Well, they still are required to have a drive, you know, with a garage.
Well, let's, you've raised an interesting question. Let's talk about the setback requirements.
Yeah, well, if we're gonna have public comment, we need to have him come to the mic, 'cause we are...
Please, yeah, please come up.
We are telling...
I'm gonna open public comment. Please share your thoughts.
Edward Guthrie, I'm Delwood.
Yes, sir.
With the zero set line, that will create several problems with...
Okay.
With the flow of traffic through there. To be quite honest, when, earlier in the year, when the base closed, the North Gate, or the South Gate, I'm sorry, Jacobs Gate, all of a sudden, our flow of traffic cutting up Edgewood to go through just to cut the light off the corner of Chadburn and Cristobal?
Yes, sir.
Increased by 1,000 percent. And I, and even to this very day, we still have some of the heavy commercial trucks that decide to cut through the neighborhood, that probably weighs seven, eight tons, which these roads are not built for that heavy equipment.
Right.
Just to bypass the light. And if y'all are familiar with the area, they had built the low-income apartments at the corner of Cristobal and Chadburn.
Yes, sir.
Which is a nightmare. You're always hearing wrecks hit that light ever since they've been put in. But anyhow, with the zero setback, I'm concerned about that. And, and the security of, I mean, with no buffer between the fence gate, like you said, those three, the three houses that the young lady was talking about?
Just to the lower.
With the shallow lots?
Yes, sir.
There's only about three of them, 'cause the alleyway widens as it goes up Edgewood. So if you go probably the sixth or seventh house up, that lot is, is deeper.
Okay.
And they, and they get deeper as they go around the corner. So that's my concern is, and you said you had pictures, but I didn't see a picture of this projected project.
So the...
You're welcome.
Just for your reference, on the, the first and second page of this packet that the applicant submitted, that's over on Holiday Drive off of Bell Street, right by Concho, the Concho River. And those are considerably more shallow lots than these are. And you can see in the photo that the applicant got two-car garage and drive in three of the four units on that. So again, you're, it's not gonna have...
So these are two-level units, according to the picture?
Pardon?
This is a two-story unit?
Yes.
Yes, sir. It'll likely be.
That even creates a different security problem with looking into the base.
Right.
So, that's my...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna clarify that the, the zero setback, if that's the type of housing they choose, is, means they can build to this, to the side property line.
Right. So what are the front and rear setbacks?
The front setback is still 25, just like a single-family home.
And that's where I was headed.
Yeah.
So the, the front setback on a RS3 is 25 feet? 15 or 25?
Yeah.
It's 15?
And the applicant's not asking for a variance on that?
Yeah, depending on what they build, again, they, they can build twin homes, which is basically a duplex, but that straddles the lot line so that each side of the duplex has, is on its own lot.
Yes, sir.
They can also build townhomes, which could be, you know...
Right.
Multiple, you know, four units all attached.
Yes.
There's different options, and the setbacks can vary depending on which of those they do. But it can be 15 to 25 feet. It's, it's definitely not zero in the front.
So the minimum is 15 in RS3?
Yes, in no case would it be less than.
And what's the rear?
RS3, I believe, is the 20 feet. No, it's, I'm sorry, it's 10.
10 feet?
Yeah. I was gonna say, it's not 20 foot. Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Can we go in on the public?
I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. So the, the only concern I have here about what's been presented, this preliminary plat here, if we've got a two-car, it, it looks like we're gonna have front access unless I'm looking at this wrong.
No, you can't have rear, 'cause it...
I don't see how we're gonna have rear access for these lots.
It backs the base.
So...
There's no alley back there.
That's a, that's a lot of traffic that we're putting on that, on that stretch of the road right there to come in and out of 15 houses. Yep, please, I'm gonna open public comment again. Please come up. Sorry to make you get up.
That street right now, as it sits...
Yes, sir.
Should have speed bumps on it right now.
Right.
They get at the top of that hill, and they come down that road, and they go back up the road, you know, and you've got kids, I'm sure kids are gonna be down in this town...
Right.
Going out in the middle of the street. And they don't stop.
I understand.
They don't stop at all. It's a hazard right now.
Yes, sir.
And we've got handicapped people there, same thing. It's gonna be, you know, if you put speed bumps there, maybe that'll slow them down.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, what he was saying, Ed was saying is, the people cut through there, cut through there and to get, to beat the light.
Yes, sir.
And it's dangerous. It's really dangerous.
I understand.
So, anyway.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna close public comment again. So I do have a little bit of concern about the intensity of the development. I think having duplexes on this stretch makes sense. If we had rear access, that, that might help. But 15 houses on that stretch right there is a lot of traffic on a road that's already got a lot of traffic on it. That's my only concern I see from what's proposed. Does anyone else wish to share their thoughts?
As much opposition there is, I think it's still better than...
I agree.
What it's zoned for, you know, what could go in there as in a man, what was it again?
Light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing.
Yeah.
Nobody, yeah. 'Cause that's, just to the south of it, it's a lot of industrial. And they could put in whatever they want there.
Yeah.
In a lot, a lot of ways, they wouldn't have to bring it to us.
That's right.
They'd just go build. It's zoned for it.
Hundred percent.
So I, as, as much as... So as much as I think there's some heartburn about it, I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
And I'd present a motion to accept as presented on both.
I second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Does anyone else wish to share their thoughts before we vote?
Before we vote, I just have a question about, can you go back a couple slides? One more, one more, sorry. Where is it? The red roof is the fire station?
Yes.
Where are the vehicles, like the engines and whatnot coming out of the fire station onto? They're going to come onto the same side as where Chris.
Doors on the front and back.
On back, okay. Because I'm just thinking that's going to create a traffic issue for emergency services.
Well, but that'll also keep them, they'll dictate whether you park on the street or not because they'll move you. You know, as they can't get out. The fire department has jurisdiction.
Right.
I'm just saying.
And again, I mean, like if we look at it, those, compared to what the applicant submitted photo wise on these other ones, those holiday lots were so shallow, therefore they were two story because that was really the only option to be able to get those to work, where these are considerably deeper. So I'm not sure if the applicant was planning on doing two story or not. But regardless, the ability to have the driveways with the garages is going to limit, you know, any on-street parking or anything like that. And again, I don't, I'm not 100% sure on the city ordinance, but I don't believe you can even perk on the street in front of a fire station.
I would assume so too.
So.
Thank you for that clarification.
What kind of control can you put on the street? As they're stating, you know, the speed bumps, parking on the street, is there any control that we have over these streets?
That's subject to Public Works Department and they have some standards for neighborhoods can request things like speed bumps. And there's a process that they go through and they'll do traffic counts and speed studies and things. But that's outside of this process. You all don't have any ability to require or limit anything. They can also create no parking zones and that sort of thing in particular areas. But they do studies and go through a process to make that happen.
What's the maximum, or the, yeah, maximum square footage they could put on in RS3?
The ratio?
Six.
Is it point six?
I think it's point six.
Point six. What's the size of these lots?
I was trying to read, I think it's 130 by 35.
35 foot width.
I'm going to stick with what I said about the intensity. I think it's just a little bit too much, given the traffic and the fire station across the street. But I like the residential nature of it.
I agree with that. The number of property construction on those three lots, that's 15 houses.
What's the total acreage?
1.8, I think someone said.
1.80 acres.
Yeah.
That's a lot of house in two acres.
And a lot of driveways and at least two cars. So you're talking 30 cars maybe.
Right.
I think the comprehensive plan amendment rezoning, I'm not really opposed to, I mean, as far as downgrading from intensity in a light manufacturing to more of a residential use. And I think some type of multifamily or higher density than just RS1 would make a little bit of sense. I just think with what's proposed here, with 15 houses on this small stretch of land is too much for the access and the amount of traffic we put on these.
And to piggyback on your thought, the problem with zoning at RS3 would be, it would allow, I think, that intensity for plat approval.
Yeah, yeah. That's, I mean, I don't know that RS3 makes sense to me.
The problem was it being light manufacturing, the price of the lots probably requires to put that many on there to justify it, you know? As you sell to someone who does light manufacturing, not ever come to us.
Okay, we still have a motion on the table. I'm going to take public comment.
Sorry, I was just kind of listening to what y'all were saying and I see what you're saying, but in turn, you know, leaving it light manufacturing, you're going to, you can put a strip there of manufacturing shops with big, huge trucks, which is also a safety problem.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
So that's, let's consider that also, you know?
Thank you. I'm going to, yes, sir.
Hey Erica, what, that skinny strip going in the middle?
It's me again Margaret. Have you seen, could you look at your thing?
Yes, sir.
Where are the kids going to play? They're going right out the door.
Small yards.
Get them playing the street.
Yes, sir.
Right behind it, right behind that those townhouses is the base.
Right.
If you're going to have an alleyway there, they're going to play in that one.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't want my kids playing like that. And I sure don't want to see any of them get hit with the speeders coming down that road.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's dangerous.
All right, we're going to close public comment. We're going to, one more comment, yes, sir, please, quickly.
The proposal is going from light manufacturing to RS3.
Yes, sir.
However, on the Chadburn Street, there's all kinds of light manufacturing sitting there.
Yes, sir.
I mean, vacant. There's nothing there, nobody wants to be there.
Yes, sir.
So to be quite honest, the young lady saying that they could build a strip industrial
It's possible.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And again, just to clarify, the rear setback on these properties is 20 feet. So they're, or 10, okay. So there is a backyard.
And if I recall, the motion was on both cases, I would suggest in this, given the discussion, probably want to take a separate vote on the zoning first and then on the plat.
Okay.
Why don't you do that? I'll move to approve on that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the plat and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 I apologize, but.
Yes, sir.
I think the plat implies that the zoning is in place to approve that size of lots.
Okay.
I would recommend us doing the zoning at first.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve rezoning from light manufacturing to RS3. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. So is that 5-2? 5-2 to approve.
Just to clarify that, I'm assuming the motion also included the change to the comprehensive plan as well.
Yes, and the change to the comprehensive plan, yes, sir. So we have 5-2 to approve the zoning to RS3. Now we're going to take the vote on the plat. So we have a motion and a second to approve the plat as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. That's 5-2 as well. All right. All right, back to subdivision plats, number seven. FP 2332, final plat of Southland Park Edition, section 25C, creating lot 6C and dedicating right of way along Stone Canyon Trail.
Good morning again. Aaron Vanoye, Assistant Director, Planning and Development Services. This is Southland Park Edition, section 25C. They will be creating lot 6C out of this block, or out of this section, if you will. You can see there that it already has a structure on there, that's why I placed this image on there. It does have a structure on there. It is a multiple suite office building right off of Loop 306 and Stone Canyon Trail. Zoning is CGCH District 1, Mr. Tommy Hebert in the Southland neighborhood. So there's the subject property. You can see Green Meadow Drive to the south, Stone Canyon, and then of course the freeway. You can see the adjacent properties, Roadhouse, as well as the Postal Service on kind of the north east, or northwest, excuse me. I know this one on the right is very blurry. It was difficult to get kind of a zoom in, but I just wanted to show that they are dedicating that right of way along Stone Canyon Trail to meet the major collector status of Stone Canyon Trail. They are dedicating approximately 647 square feet to meet that standard. So staff is recommending approval of section 25C with two conditions. One is the tax certificate and the other one is submit the plans and construct a sidewalk along Stone Canyon. As you know, approximately a year, year and a half ago, the sidewalk ordinance was adopted and recommended by this group to city council when it came to properties that are commercial. And those are also adjacent to major collectors to do sidewalks. In this case, TexDOT has completed a sidewalk along the frontage of Loop 306. We do recommend a sidewalk along Stone Canyon Trail, while it is only half a block, but it is the start of something, as that major collector may build out in the future. The applicant does have the right to request a waiver. That waiver did go through the process of going to the planning director. At this time, the planning director did deny that. There is also an appeal with this case for the sidewalk. That would be that portion of Stone Canyon Trail going from the north, from connecting to that ramp, coming back to the back part of the property there, along the northwestern side. With that, do y'all have any questions for me or the planning director, John James?
Is that all parking lot all the way up to Stone Canyon?
Yes.
Yes, it is. It is. It is all parking lot.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Do you have any photographs of the area?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Is there currently a sidewalk there already?
On Stone Canyon? No. There may be on private property, but there's not in the right of way.
What's that elevation change from the street to the side of the wall, to the sidewalk on the side of the road?
The lot.
There is some elevation change there as, and I did have photos, apparently I did not put them on here, but right here, this is where a drainage structure is for TexDOT that goes under the road and then goes north to the Arroyo. And so Stone Canyon in some ways does function as a drainage road. It is still heavily trafficked. But we simply are looking at the ordinance and what was adopted and looking at our criteria of saying, all right, this was adopted for a reason. And so we're looking at that case. Yes, there is some elevation change, as there is in lots of our neighborhoods, but that's not necessarily problematic or challenged. TexDOT just did the same thing along the frontage road where there's elevation changes. So I think there's, there is opportunity. The question is, do we require it with this development?
Okay.
On the post office side, is there a sidewalk?
Say that again.
The post office side does not have a sidewalk.
No, and there's more elevation change on that side. And they have not had to replat or there's not been a process that would trigger them. The only reason why this is happening is they came to us for a process to trigger it.
So in, I may be completely incorrect, but I believe in some past cases, we've allowed the parking structure, the parking lot itself, to be the pedestrian right of way, like without a sidewalk, have we not? There was the case over by, off of Knickerbocker and the Reese Albert Land, probably six months ago. That we did not require sidewalk because it was a parking lot.
What's that?
Pardon?
That's typically only been applied when the parking comes right up to the street and there's a flat, stable space where pedestrians can walk. In this case, the car parking comes right up to a curb and then there's landscaping between that and the street, in the area where sidewalk would go.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts or?
I just want to bring up, I mean, this maybe is unrelated to ordinances or whatnot, but where they're suggesting the sidewalk needs to be, that's a really dangerous place for anyone to walk.
Yes.
Especially when we're talking about drainage and whatnot there as well. So there is a sidewalk up closer to the building, which is a safer place to walk, and it connects all of those parking lots all the way to the convenience store on the corner as well. So there's still plenty of ingress and egress for pedestrians.
Yes.
In a much safer place than where you're suggesting a sidewalk go.
I think our concern is that if you're coming from that neighborhood and wanting to get to one of the businesses on the frontage road, once you get to that point, I agree, it's relatively unsafe. Having a sidewalk out of the street is safer than walking in the street, which is what people would do if there was not a sidewalk out of the street.
Wait, I'm confused. Are you suggesting that, you're saying on Stone Canyon, the sidewalk? But there's no other sidewalks for anyone to walk on either.
That's right. If we.
They're going to be walking on the street no matter what.
They get to the sidewalk.
However long this section of building is.
And if I'm walking from the neighborhood towards the frontage road, the closer I get to the frontage road, the more drainage and traffic at that intersection becomes a problem. So even if only I can get out of the street for that last half block, that makes it safer for walking than if I'm still in the street at that point.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
Russell with SKG Engineering, what we handed out was some photographs pulled off from Google Earth of the area and then a site map that kind of shows the location of the building and the adjacent sidewalk that's to the west side of the building that really kind of ties the front and the back of the building there. This piece is being replatted as part of a land conveyance. Where Texas Roadhouse is, they acquired some property from this platted lot some years back. And at that time, the Texas Roadhouse was replatted and to catch up the lot, the parking lot behind them. But at the time, this property was just left out of that replat. So it's just kind of been a remainder of a platted lot. So at this point, this is really just kind of a cleanup, if you will, of a legal description and kind of finishing out this, I'm going to call it somewhat paperwork or paper improvements in planning to get legal descriptions that is just a lot and block. And so we really don't want to penalize, if you will, property owners from going in and kind of correcting and legitimizing kind of stuff that already exists. There's already a structure there, there's operating businesses there. They really have no need for a building permit or to do anything different. They're just really trying to clean this property up. And so although we do understand staff's request for the sidewalk along there, there is that elevation change. There's some very mature oaks there that if we, because of the elevation change and those oak trees, we go in and put a sidewalk along there, we're potentially having to do a retaining wall to make up this elevation difference. And it potentially likely would get into the roots of those live oak trees. We're in this drought condition here, stressed already, you know, could cost the life of some nice live oak trees. So we are, we're kind of in a conundrum and a sticking point of what do we do there? You're right, there are no other sidewalks from the south coming into this. And so if somebody is coming to that business down Stone Canyon, they get to there, then they can hop onto that sidewalk that is adjacent to the building. So we feel like we've generally met the intent of providing the sidewalk. If somebody's going to the postal service, they're going to be on the other side of the street. So really, postal service, you would think would need to provide a sidewalk on their side.
Yeah. So if I'm wrong, Russell, that building has two entrances anyway, right? You've got a front and a rear. So does it not?
The parking lot is primarily for the Texas Roadhouse. The majority of the parking for that building is accomplished up front. There may be some sort of cross parking agreement, I'm not aware of that, but the primary parking for that is up front.
There is a door in the rear.
There are some, there is a door on the side, a sidewalk and stuff, so. But the main public entrance to that building would be on the frontage, on the frontage roadside.
Russell, other than, because you mentioned it was a paper cleanup, what happens if they don't replat it and just leave it? Or is this a after replat?
Well.
Sell it, is it a selling?
I don't know that they couldn't sell it. It's, and maybe that's a question for Mr. Dyson of what's the city recourse of kind of this remaining? of this remainder? Because if you're going to pursue these people legally, there's illegal divisions, if you want to say it, all over parts of San Angelo. There's been remnants sold and pieces sold before San Angelo, we got so stringent on the division of land. And you look at legal descriptions, especially even along Green Meadow, those are all chopped up into parts of lots or, and so could they sell it? I'm not a lawyer, so I'll let Brandon answer that question.
I mean, without getting into all the details, I wouldn't want to speculate on what the city could or couldn't do at this point. But if the plat otherwise meets all the requirements of the subdivision order ordinance, then, I mean, it's a ministerial act for you guys and I mean, you got to approve it. So you'll just need to decide the sidewalk issue.
Yeah, I understand. It works. I think, I think it's hard to sell a property that's not properly plotted.
It certainly helps. It leaves a cloud over it, so the buyer may be, yeah, well, what happens? I don't know unless the city comes in there and decides, we're going to pull your water services.
Right.
Where do you stop? You know, where do you start, where do you stop with doing that?
Yes, sir.
So it does, it comes down to, you know, have a buyer and a seller, want to just get it planted, legalize it, and then there's this kind of overhang of, you know, it's been functioning this way, there's a sidewalk kind of on that side that serves that purpose, so.
Okay. My question then would be to the city, on Green Valley, which is one street prior to that where the Pumpkin Patch School is and Concho Educators is, there, Concho Educators is in the middle of doing like kind of an exterior facelift. Is there sidewalks over there? No, there's not. There's not. So, and I feel like you probably have more foot traffic with a preschool there with pickup than you would with an office building where people come and park to go see whoever's in there.
Yes, sir.
Todd Coles, partner in Oak Mountain Holdings, and we are the buyers of this property. My dad has been in that office building for over 30 years, so we can speak to the flow of the building. There is a door in the back, it is not used, it is, it remains locked. There's a door on this side of the building next to that sidewalk.
Yes.
And there's also a door in the front of the building facing the parking lot. And so I'll just, and I do have a picture of it if y'all do or don't, I can share that with you, but.
No, I think we're good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coles.
Peter Baitcher.
Yes, sir.
I'm the representative, current ownership of the building, and I have some additional pictures as well. My opinion in asking for the waiver on the sidewalk is, of course, there is an existing sidewalk there. It only goes so far because it ends, there's a row of hedges which was landscaping done by the Roadhouse when they, we sold that back half of that lot to the Roadhouse because they needed more parking. And so they landscaped that, they're the hedge row, you can only go so far with a sidewalk. My other concern is three mature live oak trees. If you excavate here to pour concrete for the sidewalk on the curb line, which is where I think it would go, I have some concerns that we might kill three mature live oak trees. And so I think it's just, I measured the sidewalk that's there is 21 feet from the curb line, so it just doesn't make sense to me to put two sidewalks in there.
Yes, sir.
And risk killing three trees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Bates, city engineer again.
Yes, sir.
I guess Robert's rules might call this a point of order more than something specific to this property is that the ordinance for sidewalks was passed complementary to the ADA, the American Disabilities Act, and that's to provide public access. A private sidewalk does not provide public access. Wouldn't be considered that. So whether or not there's a sidewalk on private property does not address the public accessibility route.
Yes, sir.
Just a point.
Thank you. And I think that's an interesting and good point. I don't think it's the city's job to enforce the TOS requirements of a commercial site. If they don't meet the ADA standards, then there's state laws that require them to come into compliance. That's not part of this discussion.
And Mr. Bates is right, there is a, an accessibility requirement associated with sidewalks, but TOS, ADA, ProWAG don't specifically mandate where sidewalks go, they mandate, mandate the construction, cross slope, and all the accessibility elements of it.
Yes.
They don't necessarily dictate where they're to be put.
Yes, sir. All right, does anyone else wish to speak on this case? Yes, sir.
I disagree with Mr. Coles. The laws do relate to sidewalk that is accessible to the public.
Yes, sir.
A sidewalk on a private property is not necessarily accessible to the public.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment.
Can we go back to the staff recommendations, please?
I think there have been some really interesting points that have been raised about this specific sidewalk that bear consideration and.
John, do you think they should consider the sidewalk first before the plat?
Yeah, these technically come to you as two different items, so.
Okay.
Probably want to vote on the sidewalk. Well, in this case, it doesn't really matter, but voting on them separately is probably best.
So I think there's, well, the sidewalk ordinance, I think, is largely intended for new construction. And there's, I think, a special circumstance here with an existing building that's had a portion of a lot sold off that's required to replat, that's kind of an extenuating circumstance to have a sidewalk requirement put in. I don't know that that's the intent of our sidewalk ordinance. The trees, I'm a tree guy, and I, boy, I'd hate to lose three trees. And I do think there's a pretty good grade differential there, so it's a lot of work and probably a pretty good risk to those trees if we cut a sidewalk in along the road there.
I agree.
There's sidewalk on private property 20 feet away, as has been noted in the comments, and so I think, I think I would support granting the variance personally.
Yes.
Anyone else have thoughts or opinions?
No.
Opinions? Take a motion.
I agree. I'll take, I'll make a motion to approve with removing the sidewalk from.
Removing the sidewalk requirement, is that what you said?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Granting the variance.
Half a thought out.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the plat and grant the variance for the sidewalk requirement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven zero. All right.
Was there supposed to be a second vote on that?
So we're down to one rezoning, comprehensive plan amendment. And it's going to be the Coliseum area. CP 2302 and PD 2304, Coliseum Drive. A request for an amendment to the comprehensive plan changing from neighborhood to neighborhood center, rezoning from RS1, RS2, and CGCH to a planned development district following, excuse me, allowing RS1, RS2, and neighborhood commercial uses subject to certain conditions and limitations located along approximately one block of either side of 4,000, 4,100, and 4,200 blocks of Coliseum Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sherri Daly, principal planner. I want to refresh your memory, back in April, when we had the Burke Monument that came forward and wanted to amend their conditional use. At that time, you, the planning commission, said, we need to take a look at this area. This area is starting to develop more. It is an area that's the entrance to the Coliseum. It has a broad street, we need to look at how we can protect that and bring some ideas forward. And so that's what this is. Over the space of the months since that time, I've talked to property owners in the area, I've talked to people who are interested in doing something in the area, I've talked to property owners on both sides of Coliseum, some that have recently purchased the land to do a residential development that is interested to see what is going to happen with this and how is it going to affect them. So this is in District 2, Tom Thompson's district, it is the Lakeview neighborhood. And we contacted all of the people that you see in the red and in the blue. We sent notices out to everyone over the space of the last few months. I have probably talked to somewhere between 45 and 60 because I wasn't keeping count, and I'll be honest, until recently, of people that were calling and asking questions. The questions centered around, how are they going to, how are we going to help them protect their residential piece of property? At the same time, they understood that this is going to be impacted about with any new development that's going to occur at the Coliseum, and has already been substantially impacted since this project of the Coliseum was developed in the 50s and the 60s. At that time, they were told that there would be a study that was done. There was a study done, the study was limited to transportation and connections over to Armstrong, came out of that study. But the study never really materialized for this area and for how the impact of this area would be felt by the residential properties in particular as things started to change. And over the past few years, there have been a number of changes that have occurred without really our knowing about it, whether it's a cottage industry of auto repair or a fence that I found this weekend that was built and enclosure put up, which allows them to do a number of manufacturing items inside that fence, all of which, none of that came to us and we didn't know about it. So in looking at the area, and again, sending out the notices, from the paper notices, I had only three opposed. We've had 12 in favor, and with all the calls and the personal visits that I've had, the biggest comment has been, how are you going to protect my property? Because everybody refers back to when the gas station was built and the lighting for that gas station and the tremendous impact it had on the whole residential area. Also the cars, every time that there's an event at the arena, yes, there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of people on the street, a lot of driving up and down, but then it goes back to being basically a residential area with some changes going on, and people are aware of those changes.
Hold on, Sherri, can you, sorry, not to interrupt you, but can you go back one slide? It looks like the three oppositions, two of them appear to be residential. What is this other, the long?
Big lot.
Yeah, I can't read that number. 38061?
This one, that is a vacant lot. The gentleman who owns that piece of property says that he wants to do some big project, and he knows that what we're entertaining is not that, and what we're recommending is not that. And he does figure that, in talking with him, he did figure that eventually, at some point in time, he would be able to get a rezoning that matches the zoning that's out there, which is the, half of his property is general commercial, heavy commercial right now, and he wants that, the rest of it to be that, and then he has a piece of property that fronts on 43rd also, and he wants to submit for that.
So he wants the current property that's split half and half to stay general commercial?
That would be his choice, yes.
And RS1.
And RS1. Okay.
Or the construction company.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
You bet. So we took a look at the entire area, and it is changing. Everybody is aware that it's changing, impacts have occurred. We were looking at what could we do to mitigate those impacts, at the same time, provide for some commercial development, which does make sense for the area because it is adjacent to the arena, and there have been changes at the arena over the years, and there are going to continue to be changes there and more events going on. We looked at trying to make something that's compatible with the arena and with the neighborhood. How do you encourage commercial and still maintain the viability of the single-family residents who choose to stay that way? The neighborhood commercial is what we have centered on with some conditions and limitations to that, and I'll be bringing those forward. But we were looking for community need, we got a lot of impact on that, and looking for guidelines, and those are what we'll be coming forward to you. This is the area, and as you can see, right now, it still maintains kind of a rural boulevard approach to the Coliseum. There hasn't been a lot of development. What has occurred, if you look at the picture on the top, well, come back here, up here, this one, where all of those vehicles are on the right-hand side, there are two buildings that used to be residential that are now housing offices for either groups that utilize the arena or have some interest in the arena, and they are using them as offices. They essentially converted the houses to offices, which we agree is not a bad use at all, and we were glad to see that. The one that I spoke about is the one in the middle, which the last time I was out, which was April, that did not exist. And it does now, and I went over, granted, it was a Sunday afternoon, I went over and to try and see if anyone was there. There was a gentleman that was out in the yard, I talked to him a little bit, and that's why I got the feeling that they are doing some manufacturing, small manufacturing in there, and they didn't want anybody to know about it. So we had originally looked for recommendations, we talked about it, talked among ourselves, listened to what you as the planning commission had said to us, what you would like to see, and our thought process was that we want to do something that provides for the residential, would provide for neighborhood commercial, that provided, commercial that could be used by events at the arena, whether it's restaurants going into a home, which we have a number of examples of, a leather worker who did indicate when I talked to him, that's one of the things that he would like to do. Also, we were looking at the Coliseum Drive itself and where the residential is, where the vacant property is. The west side of the Coliseum Drive seems to present the best area for some commercial development and a good walkable area that would provide services to the arena and to the people who live in the area. And so the sidewalks and providing some. And so the sidewalks and providing some landscape requirements and those kinds of things came forward to us. And so you'll see those in our recommendation for conditions and limitations in that area. And so we, this starts our recommended conditions and limitations. The first being that the front setback along Coliseum be 15 feet, both for residential and commercial uses. A lot of the residential buildings are already at 15 to 20 feet back, so it would be no change for them. But any new buildings that would be built, whether they're residential or commercial, it just seems to make sense that giving them that 15-foot front yard requirement and then a second item of that, would that be that that would require landscaping and sidewalk along the boulevard and then push the parking to the back of the lot, not parking in the front where it gives a sea of, a parking lot sea of cars, if you will, but to push those automobiles to the center, to the back of the area where there is enough room for development of that kind of use. The third item would be any signage for non-residentials be uses, be attached to the building and be limited to 50 square feet. Freestanding signage would not be allowed. Signage is the first real impact that affects an area, and so limiting the signage, if everybody in there has the same requirements, it just makes it a better use. The fourth item was use of existing homes or for both homes or offices or commercial use would be encouraged in whatever way we could work to help them achieve that. The fifth item was lighting for non-residential uses shall be fully shielded in order to minimize spill over lighting and glare on adjacent and nearby properties. Again, back to the gas station that has 24-hour lighting that affects everybody in the area. The item six is allowable. Neighborhood commercial uses are generally to be service and retail uses. There would be no drive-through uses that would be allowed because drive-through type of use changes the neighborhood and we're still trying to keep the neighborhood concept. Seven, sidewalks will be required along both Coliseum Drive and 43rd because there is a lot of foot traffic when there's events going on in that area. And then for purposes of this planned development, the Burke Monument Manufacturing Company is considered an artisan use and is considered a special use allowed within this district. That received a lot of support from the neighbors when I was talking to them because they've been there for a long time. They've provided employment for a number of people that live in the area and they have done some other special things for neighbors and they're very protective of Burke. And number nine, non-residential uses must be compatible in size, scale, and design with the existing residential uses and the desired character of the neighborhood. Site and building desire, design must be approved through the urban design review process prior to approval of a site plan or building permit. This would ensure that we would get something that works in the neighborhood and would also remind everybody that they have to do the landscaping in the sidewalk because we'd catch it at the early stage. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment, CP 2302, changing from neighborhood to neighborhood center, and approval of the rezoning from RS1, single-family residential, to planned development district, allowing RS1, R2, and neighborhood commercial uses, subject to those conditions and limitations that we had listed, and then located along those streets and either side of Coliseum and then along 43rd. And with that, I'll close the presentation and...
Sherri, can you go back to slide with item number three on it, please?
Yell at me when I get to where you want it.
One slide.
Come on.
Well, if you can't get it, it was regarding the parking. The one concern that I do have, I understand if it's, let's say, a leather maker that may only have their vehicle, an apprentice, and maybe one or two other consumers at the same time, but if there is a home that is being converted to, let's say, a restaurant in the neighborhood, that, the way that's worded really kind of worries me slightly in the sole fact that a restaurant obviously requires considerably more parking. And so if it's designated just to the back, not allowing parking in the front, you're going to have obviously on-street parking, which, you know, could pose other issues. So that, or maybe it wasn't three, wherever it went, two? One, sorry.
Yep.
So, you know, so I think that that item needs to be definitely like on a case-by-case, depending on the business that would be posing something to planning personally. So, just a thought.
And this doesn't, this doesn't prevent a building from, you know, let's say they were building a new building, it doesn't prevent them from being back farther and having that parking in the front. It just allows them to be closer if they choose to.
Okay, thank you.
I think what I'd like to do is open it up for public comment and let those that are here come up and share their thoughts. If you're coming up to speak, please state your name and address or single-member district. Anyone wish to speak on this?
No. The other.
Morning. My parents moved to 30 East 41st.
Before you go any further, do you mind stating your name?
Roy Stanley, sorry.
It's okay. And do you have an address or single-member district?
30 East 41st.
Thank you, sir.
And at some point, I probably would be moving into that house. I don't live there right now, but we've been in that neighborhood since 59 or been, I've been associated with it. The area you're talking about between Coliseum Drive and Chadburn, that low area there?
Yes, sir.
In 59, that was the state Fish Hatchery. And that ground is, that area is low, so it's not feasible for businesses or houses. It works real good for what it's used for now, storing building materials, you know, I mean gravel and cleat and that such thing on it. As far as the monument plant, it's been a good neighbor for years. I don't understand why they've had to wait a year for an answer to add just a few hundred square feet, I think it's 300 or 400 square feet, to their building?
Yes, sir.
Which helped them up and their contractors. And once this built, that smaller area is not going to show up to anybody, so it looks like they should have been approved for something years ago or as soon as they applied for it. As far as the, when I first heard about this, I thought it was a good idea of going neighborhood commercial and family or homes. And then it got to second letter, which was talking about converting existing homes to businesses, and that's really not going to be good for the few homeowners that are going to be left there. You don't, a business or a, you don't want to be surrounded by businesses. A business in a neighborhood is fine. Our parents built a building on the vacant lot at 20 East 41st and had a boot and sheer repair shop and sales of merchandise. And it didn't seem to impact the neighborhood. There wasn't that much traffic. But when you add a whole bunch of businesses and you redo the whole neighborhood, you're destroying the neighborhood from what it was, although it's a poor area and it's vacant lots and when I was a kid, all those vacant lots had foundations on them that were from when the tornado wiped them all out in 53. And, you know, I would lean towards condos or houses or something like that more so than commercial. That's my feelings. It's not going to affect me a whole lot one way or the other, but just, you know, have been in that neighborhood for those years, that's just what I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Russell Gully, 706 South Abe Street. I see some concern here just because of some of the people we deal with and projects we work on. I guess I'm not getting it wrong. Some of the conditions with respect to requiring an urban design review for every single project, a residential project? No. This is, this is adding just more red tape and regulations on a very limited area that is already struggles probably to survive. So we shouldn't put an onus on them for an urban design review and extensive landscape. We're in the middle of the desert almost. This is a drought. Things are dying, barely surviving. So to put this, I think it's too much, you know, to limit signage on the building to 50 square feet, you know, that seems to me pretty stringent there. Some of this stuff is great, you know, maybe use existing homes for commercial or offices? Sure, if that works out. I really do have concern with staff kicking in an urban designer review. If the size of the project requires one, then let it require one, but let's just not add it by default to this zoning. Sidewalks, you know, maybe the city or the Fairgrounds Association should put the sidewalks. They're the big gorilla that's created this demand for sidewalks and maybe the city could look in within their capital campaign or within all the funds that the rodeo association has. Maybe they could kick in some funds and add a sidewalk out there because I don't see this area just, all of a sudden, we changed the zoning and it's just now filling up. This is going to be a slow, slow process. Burton Monument, I don't know what we can do, but tell staff, get them their permit. Why are we dragging this out?
Well, yeah, I'm going to interrupt you before you go any further. That case came through a few months ago and I think we approved it. So I don't think that this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, but what we're talking about in no way impacts the expansion of the monument company that came through. Is that correct?
I think that's right. We, that moved forward.
We're not holding them up.
Hopefully so. And I think it sounds like they're an artisan, they're not...
Yeah, and to go a little bit further, it was the Burke Monument Manufacturing Company's case that prompted this discussion. We've got a monument company that's been there for 60, 70 years in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And we're looking around and they're saying it's transitional and there's other maybe interest in redevelopment and that's what's prompted this, so.
So I think my two, my main concerns is the UDR requirement and then sidewalks. Sure, if someone comes in, develops and they need to put sidewalks in, yes, do that, but maybe the city needs to step back or I don't know how we encourage rodeo association or somebody, then maybe the city should put that in as part of CIP because that is a boon to the city for the taxpayers in the Coliseum there. So thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah.
Thank you, Russell.
If I could address...
Yes, sir. Please come on.
I'll address some of Russell's comments in a second.
Okay. Yes, sir.
As far as the sidewalks, most of the people that live in that area don't make a lot of money. They're already stressed with the rise in property values and, which means their house taxes are going up and their insurance is going up. This is going to really put a stress on them if they have to pay for sidewalks besides all this other.
Yes, sir.
The city or the rodeo association, someone else should put the bill for sidewalks. And I agree, sidewalks are needed there. Anytime there's something big going on up there, there's a lot of foot traffic out in the street.
Right. Thank you, sir. Okay, John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make a comment. Russell mentioned your urban design review for a home or residence. The condition says non-residential uses only.
Okay.
Part of the reason for many of these conditions is trying to find the balance because this is zone single-family. All you can do right there now are homes. And so there seems to be a desire to do non-residential development in this area, but there's a concern and you've heard that from the neighbors, we don't want this to turn into something that it's not a neighborhood. And so this is an attempt to allow those non-residential uses some retail and office while keeping the character of the neighborhood. And that's the purpose of the urban design review, to ensure that whatever gets built in that area does go through some review to ensure that it's not out of scale with the residential uses. And so what this wouldn't allow, for example, is somebody to buy up three or four lots and put in some huge, relatively large Walgreens or strip center.
Yeah.
It's intended to allow conversion of those existing homes to some type of office or commercial without opening it up to the full range of commercials. So it's really a way to address the concerns of the neighbors because frankly, one of the options, I don't think staff would support full-blown commercial in this area. I think if the only choice were, let's go commercial or let's keep it residential, I think we'd say keep it residential, but this is a way to accommodate some of those uses while keeping some restrictions.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Do you mind going to the, to the map of the properties that are part of this discussion? Thanks, Erin. Okay.
Where was the green fence? Is that a better view?
All right, that's great. Which property had the green fence, Sherri?
The green fence?
38064?
It's...
No.
Up where you see Coliseum and 43rd on the east side and it is the one on the corner there, not that one, the other corner, Erin, that one, right there.
Got it. Okay. So first question, why aren't we going all the way down to Chadburn Street with this area and taking the Stripes or whatever it is now and the east side of Coliseum from Chadburn, since that's the corridor that's funneling into the Coliseum?
Well, and Sherri may want to jump in, but the boundary doesn't go all the way to Chadburn. It's the red properties.
Yes.
So the blue ones that are right fronting on Chadburn are not included.
Right. And I'm asking why we, why we haven't gone south to Chadburn and included the Stripes and the blocks south of the area that has already been designated? What is that, 39th Street?
Yeah, it's about 40th. To be honest with you, I think because that was already general commercial, heavy commercial, we cut it off...
On the south portion, both sides?
Just on the, you're right, right, just on the left side. The commercial comes in a little further down.
So I guess my first question would be, can we expand this area to include?
Certainly.
The land that is east of the Stripes?
It would have to come back because this has not been advertised that way.
Right.
You could definitely add it.
Well, and that was the other thing I was going to suggest. This is a big change and there's a lot of folks that are impacted by this. And I hate to make a decision on the first presentation of this concept and not give the public an opportunity to weigh in as we, as we consider this.
I agree 100%.
The comments about the urban design review, I think, are legitimate. I share Russell's concern about having more checkpoints and reviews and more documentation. I understand the staff's concern about commercial development. I understand the staff's concern about commercial development, uh, so maybe limiting it to commercial, as they've suggested, uh, satisfies that, that requirement, but not for residential use. Uh, and then sidewalks, I, I think Coliseum would need a sidewalk. I don't know if the side streets, like 40th and 41st and 42nd, um, and maybe even 43rd, uh, would, would need sidewalks. And I would, I would take y'all's thoughts on those, but I would concentrate maybe the sidewalks on the, on the main thoroughfare of Coliseum.
But, but that would only also dictate if something changed, correct?
That's correct.
Current residents wouldn't have to go in.
There's no, yeah, and there's, none of this, none of this is triggered unless someone wants to make a change in this area.
Yeah.
So, if you're, if you own a home and you come in to remodel it and you've got frontage on Coliseum, the, the staff's gonna talk to you about a sidewalk. If you wanna convert a house into an office, uh, on Coliseum, you're gonna go to urban design review and build a sidewalk and convert.
I, I just wanna be clear, remodeling of a home would not, in any case, trigger sidewalks.
It wouldn't.
The, the only case a home would is perhaps if it, if it was completely demolished and rebuilt.
Okay.
At that point, it might.
Okay. So, the permitting pro- process doesn't trigger a sidewalk?
About a change of occupancy.
A change of occupancy would. So, if a home is going to an office, then yes, it would.
Right, yeah.
But, simple remodeling would not.
Okay. Does anyone else have thoughts? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Are we thinking we need a motion to table this, then?
Yes.
All right. That's what I, that's what I'd like to do personally.
I mean, this is a huge thing. I don't think this is a one-time and done.
I think, I think we're heading in the right track.
I do too.
Because this is a unique area.
Yeah.
You have commercial mixed in with residential, as well as things that have happened over the years have been in place for longer than.
And I, I'm with Travis, I'd like to see going down Coliseum, where that peak of the Stripes hits Coliseum.
Yeah.
That doesn't make any sense. Just cut one block out.
And that would include 39th Street as well, because it's the first street, uh, to your right as you come in. Uh, make that turn from south, or north Chadburn onto Coliseum from...
Yes.
Um, the east, uh, from the south would be 39th.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts?
If your inclination is to table it, uh, i- if you want to include additional area...
Yes.
That would probably need to be part of your motion.
Okay. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to table, um, including when the revision comes back, um, the southern portion of Coliseum going down to 39th at the peak of the Stripes.
Second.
Okay. Uh, so anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, to continue this to the next meeting, uh, and expand the area in question, uh, south to where Coliseum intersects Chadburn Street. So, it'll include the Stripes on the west side of Coliseum and the, the lots on the east side of Coliseum at Chadburn all the way north to 43rd Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven, zero to continue. All right, conditional uses. Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Conditional uses appeal may be directed to City Council. CU 2326, request for conditional use to allow short-term rental at 2458 Fisherman's Road in the RS1 zoning district.
And this, um, conditional use is in the Nazworthy neighborhood. I did use the same map, because it was this yellow one right here. When I came last month, it was considered expired. So, this has been operating, um, they came for a conditional use in 2018, got a change of occupancy, they've been operating, they renewed in 2019, and of course, then it's every two years after that, so they did renew in 2021. They were up for renewal in May of this year and did not make it in time. So, this has been operating, um, and, let's see, there is, I did check with code and I'm the police, there has been no reports of disturbances, there's no code violations. It is RS1 zoning in District 1, Tommy Hebert, the Nazworthy neighborhood. Um, they do have two paved parking spots, um, in the picture. And we did mail eight notices. We received one in favor, which was the next-door neighbor, um, and we didn't receive any in opposition. Um, that star should've been removed there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so we are recommending approval again. Um, they do, like I said, have the two off-street parking that is paved. Um, they just ma- maintain their certi- certificate of occupancy and then to get an annual fire inspection. And then from this one forward, it would be another year and then two years after that, so they would still have to come back in a year.
So, it's restarted?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any questions? I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward, state your name and address. All right, I'm gonna close public comment. Uh, if, if you could go back to the picture of the, of the car in the carport. Yes. So, I see two paved parking spaces, but I don't see, what's the requirement for the driveway?
So, I did not include a picture.
There's a picture on the case here that shows what looks like a big dirt cul-de-sac.
So, I'm gonna... Let me use this one as a, as a pointer here. So, this right here is Colici, you are correct, but the approach is, um, concrete.
Okay.
And that's...
So, that meets the requirements.
That meets the requirement.
Okay. All right. Anyone have thoughts or wish to make a motion?
Make a motion approved as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six, zero. CU 2337, condit- the request for conditional use to allow short-term rental at 4219 Riverbend Drive in the RS1 zoning district.
Sherry Bailey, again, principal planner. Uh, this is a request for a short-term rental in an area that, um, we have not had before. Um, it is in District 1, Tommy Hebert's area, Rio Vista neighborhood. It is zoned RM1, low-rise, multifamily. It is the second lot over.
Yes.
They are...
I'm sorry, Sherry, to interrupt you, but I wanna clarify, this, the zoning district is RM1, not RS1. Is that correct? The notes here on the, on the agenda say RS, that's why I'm gonna clarify.
I'm sorry, it is, it is RM1.
RM1, thank you.
On there.
Okay.
Um, also, if you recognize, is there are four units, townhomes, that are there. It's in the middle of a mobile home park, um, also. We sent out eight notices, we received no comments back either for or against. Um, in this neighborhood, Rio Vista, there is one other STR, and I have that marked on there. It's a fairly recent one, it's on Kansas, if you remember that one.
It's on what?
On Kansas.
I'm...
Kansas is...
I'm confused.
Yeah, I...
Kansas is...
That, Rio Vista, is, the mobile home park with those townhomes, is that not off of Bryant?
I thought it was, is it not east of Bryant?
I don't think that the map's correct, Sherry, I'm sorry.
Well...
Do you have a picture of the townhome I can tell you?
I thought, there we go.
Yeah.
On the east side of Bryant.
It's east of Bryant.
Yes.
It's just off of Bryant, east, in the mobile home park, yeah. But it is, it says on our map, Rio Vista.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
And I think you're right.
But you said that the other...
The other, the other property in question, yeah.
Is in Kansas, not even even...
Which is very far away from that.
It's off of Cox.
At Capital Heights.
Capital Heights, there you go.
At least a couple miles.
Capital, yeah. Capital Heights is over behind... I'm trying. ...a bank and the hospital on Nickle Park. And it...
You don't have the magic touch?
Yeah.
Is this Kansas? Yeah, like Kansas is here, but the mobile home park is like century, it's like down here.
Yeah.
But this, this is existing, let's be honest.
Correct, all that in purple is Rio Vista.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, showing that that's the area and there's only one other, and that's the closest.
Okay, it's a long way away, we got it.
Sorry, the way that was phrased was very strange, sorry.
No, it's no problem.
We were trying to give you the neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am.
And show in each neighborhood how many STRs there are.
Thank you.
And this was our first foray.
Yeah, no, perfect, thank you. Sorry about that.
Confused you and now me, Brittany.
I was like, very far apart.
But, this is the property...
Yes, ma'am.
...in question. There are, uh, two parking spaces that are paved. Um, the green area and the river is the front part of this, and, um, it makes, uh, an STR, certainly will make a nice STR. Uh, staff is recommending approval, subject to the three conditions, pave and maintain the two street parking, it's already paved, obtain a certificate of occupancy, and obtain and comply with the annual fire inspection from the Fire Marshal's Office. And with that, are there any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
We're gonna open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this case, please come forward. All right, we're gonna close public comment and take thoughts or a motion.
Make a motion approved as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seven, zero. Item 3, CU 2338, request for conditional use to allow short-term rental at 1126 Cindy Lane in the RS1 zoning district.
Good morning again, Erin Vanoye, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Um, as you mentioned, this is RS1 zoning, 1126 Cindy Lane. It's in the Glenmore neighborhood, which is District 3 with Mr. Harry Thomas as the council member. Here is that neighborhood map, and I tried to give you beautiful colors, 'cause we had to have something, right? So, our current request is the gold star that's up there at the top. You can see it's very close to the south Concho Park Drive and the Bell Street, um, park area with, where the rivers converge. The approved conditional use with a CO is the green one, which is at, just off of Chadburn, that's coming through there that y'all saw a few months ago. And the blue ones are approved ones without a conditional, uh, without a certificate of occupancy. They got the conditional use, but they've not gone through the full process. You can see they're much closer to the base, uh, in fact, just kinda dotted right around. And then there's two that were in red that were denied or expired and have not come forward.
Okay.
So, that kinda gives you how many are in that area. Of course, I think the base is driving part of that.
Yes.
That was part of our rationale as looking at approval was the base, as well as, uh, close proximity to, uh, amenities. We did send out 40 notices. As you can see, this is smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood. Um, we did have one in favor that was just kind of adjacent to the, across the street, and then two opposed. One just to the, the property just to the north, and then about three properties to the north and across the street. Their main concerns was, was traffic, uh, and not knowing who their neighbors may be. Uh, that was their main concerns of not knowing who might be renting out the, the, the short-term rental. Uh, we do still think it, uh, does meet all of the conditions for conditional use within our ordinance. Um, they do have the two streets, uh, off-street parking. Uh, the other conditions would be to obtain the certificate of occupancy, as well as the annual fire inspection. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Erin. We'll open it up for public comment. If you would, please state your name and address or single member district.
All right, I'm James Langley, and, uh, the dress I have is 1202 Cindy, which is next door. I'm not one of the ones that mailed it in, so I'll be the third opposed, I suppose. And reasons I'm opposed to it are, first, just its use, as today, you're enjoying the neighborhood, bought into it as a stable neighborhood, and the short-term rentals aren't stable. You can Google all day long, but I do have experience with two friends, and they talked to me about one lives next door to one and one lives across the street from one. And it's not good stuff, some of it's funny, only because I don't live next to it. But, uh, so there's that, so the enjoyment right there has been taken away. So, I get people, why they would wanna do it, increases their value, but I feel it's the expense of the enjoyment of the people that are around the neighborhood, especially when there start to be more and more and more of them. Secondly, I am a real estate broker, so there's a future value, I feel, is affected. Um, usually the process, when a buyer looks for a house, they, you know, narrow them down to one, two, three properties, and they do a little bit of research. You know, they go online and start looking, and it's not far a leap that they would also find a short-term rental and just not wanna deal with that one and just find out on the other ones. Also, as a real estate agent, I think it's probably the time where you would want to tell your clients if there's one there, because there's enough negative stigma online and stuff about that. So, as an agent, you should probably tell your clients if there's a one there, too. So, that's reduced value there for the person selling their home in the future. So, that, that's my thoughts on it. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Waterman. I live on that street. I've lived there for over 30 years. My house is paid for. I'm real proud of that. I wa- don't want my property values going down, because while today they say they're going to do a bed and breakfast there, I don't know what they're gonna do next week. And it's only a three-bedroom house, so I don't know how many people they think they can bring in there and actually make a profit. I just don't see this being good for the neighborhood. They're not living there for the most part. They don't take all that great a care of their, their yard, and I don't see when they're gonna rent it, it's gonna be, be any better. So, I see no benefit for that street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Lydia Faktor, and I'm the actual owner of that house. Um, as far as the comment about not taking care of it, y'all would do the best we can with limited use of water. And most houses do have dead, and the ones that are around me, they do have dead, they don't have pretty green, green grass, it's, it's yellow, but we can't use water that much. Um, we do keep it mowed, we keep, try the best that we can to get our, our weeds away. Um, I took a little bit of notes about the opposition, one was the traffic, there's not gonna be much heavy traffic. That, that, it won't be, the traffic will not increase. Um, and not knowing who the neighbors are, um, honestly, I, I don't know my neighbors anyway. I, I know a few, I, I, I know her face, I don't really know her name. Um, we wave to each other, things like that, don't really go visit people, don't really go visit the neighbor. It is a very nice neighborhood, it is a quiet neighborhood, I, I do like that. Not just anybody's gonna be able to, to rent it, um, they will be, identification will be verified. It is my home and I love it, and, um, I will take good care of it, and, um, I have Vivint security, I have, um, two cameras, front and back, with, um, the Ring Doorbell cameras. So, um, I will do the best that I can to make sure everything's safe. Thank you.
Will you, I'm sorry, before you go, will you be maintaining this rental, or will...
I, I will, and then my husband also lives here.
Okay.
Uh-huh, and if I have...
But you're not hiring someone to, to manage it?
I was gonna say, if, if the need comes, mhm, I will get a manager.
Okay. But for now, you guys are gonna manage it?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're, we're gonna do our best to do it ourselves, but if we need to get a manager... We're gonna do our best to do it ourselves, but if we need to get a manager, we will.
Okay. Thank you.
Who's Chris Goodlow?
He's my husband.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else wish to speak on this case? Please, come up. State your name again, please, if you don't mind.
James Langley, next door, 1202 Cindy Lane. So I wanna, I get that having someone manage it that lives there as owner is better, but the problem is the, it's, are the fires already started. An alarm-term rental, you have stability and same person, just like somebody owns the house, like maybe they have a city ordinance violation or noise or something. You work with them and they're there. But problem with short-term rental, the way I see it, the person may only be there for a few days. So, okay, I get it, and I'm supposed to have a party, or not supposed to have 10 cars parked out here, or whatever. It's a very packed neighborhood. That goes away, but then you get something, again, and again, and again, and it just continues to be, it never solves itself because it's always a different group of people every single time. I wouldn't wanna have that sort of PTSD if I live there, just wondering what's gonna be there. You just solve the issue because it just sort of packs in your mind over and over and over, and just adds. So I just wanted to counter that a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The rules do have to follow. They do have to follow the city ordinance. And like I said, I do have security cameras. If I see something that's not going, that's not supposed to be happening, they have more people coming in.
Yes, ma'am.
That all can be taken care of quickly.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anyone else wish to speak on this case? I'm gonna close public comment.
Okay, I've got a few thoughts.
Take thoughts or emotion.
Over the years, I personally have remodeled three homes in that specific neighborhood. There are a variety of homeowners as well as rentals in the neighborhood. Actually, in the last four months, around the corner on Todd, there were two evictions. And in those evictions, the, and those were in long-term rentals. The weeds were as tall as I am, cars parked in lawns, et cetera, which did devalue the neighborhood. You know, as we've talked about many, many, many cases on short-term rentals, in order for an owner-operator to be successful, they need to maintain the home, have it in good standing, otherwise it's not going to rent. You know, with the fact that this is near the base, chances are it is gonna be families coming to visit, somebody that might be stationed here. I would assume 80% of the time or potentially more. With that being stated, I am in favor of staff's recommendation and vote to approve.
All right. Anyone else wish to share comments or second the motion?
I mean, I'll reiterate, if there is a problem, they can call and complain and it doesn't get renewed. Whereas a long-term rental, they don't have that ability.
Yeah.
So I'll second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table to approve as presented by the staff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Seven zero. All right. CU 2339, request for conditional use to allow short-term rental at 6006 Terlingua Street in the RS1 zoning district. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Stripling. Erin Vanoye, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. This one is going to be, at one, one glance, a quick glance, it's straightforward. At the other glance, there are some considerations for this one as we get into this. So I say, keep an open mind and let's, let's just have fun listening to this one. So it is a short-term rental request in RS1 zoning. It is in District One, Tommy Hebert. It is the Country Club Neighborhood. It's 6006 Terlingua Street. This is a picture of the front. And the parking is in the back off the alleyway, so there is an alleyway between houses and parking that comes off the back as well as a garage. And so there's parking back there. So as you can see, this part of Country Club just slides in under there, under Twin Mountain Drive. As of right now, that's the only request in the Country Club Neighborhood that we could find for short-term rentals. The one that's in red's actually the closest one in the Bonham District, which is the Bonham neighborhood, which is across Twin Mountain. And it was actually denied at, I think it's been about two years ago it was denied. So right now, there's not any others in that area. This is very unique in my mind, based on where it's located. One would argue that it's very close to Nazworthy and Knickerbocker, and so is this going to be a lake short-term rental? Or is this something that's gonna, somebody's gonna get on Knickerbocker and head back into town or go around to the base? You know, what, what's the purpose of the, of coming to this short-term rental? It is a very nice, fairly new, established neighborhood. This is very, is towards the eastern end, where then it turns into kinda some blank land until you start getting into some, a little bit more higher-density area. You can see there is opposition on this block, as well as the letter came in Friday evening. And so that's an email that's, that would be added to that. So the one in favor is the property owners. We did have one in favor from far outside of the 200-foot notice. It was within the Country Club Neighborhood, but it was about a mile away. It is Country Club. I can prove it to you. Right there. See that purple outline?
Yeah, our, our neighborhood boundaries that the city is divided up into don't necessarily match exactly with what people think of in terms of neighborhoods.
Yeah, you see, Southland stops way up there and Bonham comes way across, so it's, yeah. Yeah. It's just interesting the way it's laid out. But, so there are that opposition. I did send you the opposition. Most folks are concerned about property values, traffic, and children playing. You can even see this one, that's the email. Their concern was where are children gonna play? That they play in the street and in the backyards, and so they're concerned about other folks that come into the neighborhood for this short-term rental. The other consideration, while it is not a rule at this time, it is adjacent to Lamar Elementary. And there are currently Lamar Elementary and SISD own that whole large piece that comes around, that comes all the way back down to Twin Mountain. Now, if you went property line to what would be a, a school property area, it's about 1,900 feet. If you go property line to the actual SISD property, you're looking at 142 feet, just straight across from Terlingua and Schoolhouse Road. As many of y'all know, that's gonna be under consideration soon at the city council on how properties like this will be looked at. And so again, this is a, a unique case where there's one large property with a school much further down than what maybe we've seen in some cases where an STR was very close to a school or daycare or other things like that. And so this is something, we just wanted to bring that up for y'all to discuss, if you wanted to discuss. But looking at everything, yes, there is some opposition from neighbors. We've had opposition before with short-term rentals. We have, in the past, said, well, our rules are set up to mitigate that after one year. And so we do recommend for approval with our standard three conditions, that they would go through the process to maintain their off-street parking, which we feel very confident they will, obtain their certificate of occupancy, and get their fire inspections as needed. So with that, do y'all have any questions for me?
Do you have questions for the staff?
Do you wanna stay on this slide?
That's perfect.
Or go back to this one or this one here?
That one's great. Thank you, Erin.
You bet.
I'm gonna open it up for public comment.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Craig Shaw. I live just immediately south of this home in 6010 Terlingua. And I do have some concerns, primarily in the extent that according to the application for a property like this, there must be consideration as to the original intent of the neighborhood. And I don't believe the intent of the neighborhood was to create mixed residential-commercial zones, which is essentially what we're doing. It is also not adjacent to any areas that might increase demand for this property, such as the lake, the base, the university, so on and so forth. And since occupancy rate, according to 2021 data, is about 50% for all STRs in the city of San Angelo, that means this home will be empty four, six months out of the year. I don't think that that increases or that increases the value or the attractiveness of the neighborhood at all. Okay? There is really no standardized renter screening process. Airbnb just simply does a fraud screening. There's no way to screen for any sort of character quality or anything like that with respect to who comes in. So we don't know, and the proximity to the school makes this, I think, very important. We don't know who these people are, why they're here, or what kind of intent they may have. Only last month, the city council tabled a discussion on STRs due to protests from the Red Bluff residents on a particular property. And in fact, seven years ago, STRs were effectively banned by the city. So we're very, only recently figuring out how to manage this particular situation. And I don't think that putting a property in this particular neighborhood where we're really not even quite sure how to manage or regulate them as a city is warranted. Also, as my understanding, the STRs have to have visible signage outside of them that identifies them as an STR.
That's not accurate.
Okay, did I take that back then?
Okay.
I thought they had to post rules.
I think our ordinance doesn't allow signage.
Correct, exterior signage is not allowed, but the rules are posted inside the.
That's because it's inside.
Yes, sir.
Then I take that back. I misunderstood. As far as property values in general, I'm not gonna throw that petard out there because the data shows that they have very little real impact on property values in terms of dollars.
Right.
But should owners find out, as the gentleman said a moment ago, that, that is an STR, that could dissuade buyers from looking at properties in the region and in the neighborhood, and, and that is a concern as well.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate this committee's time.
Thank you.
I'm Paulette Shell, and I live next door to the proposed STR. We've lived in our home this month 10 years. We built that home and have raised a family there. It was built in 2013, and we've seen the neighborhood grow. We've seen some neighbors leave. We've seen many neighbors stay. We are a good mix of young families and retired folks. Very early on, we would have block parties, and that kind of went away, and especially with COVID. We, we have tended to stay in our own little spaces, but we do still get together from time to time and are neighborly and enjoy each other's company. It is a beautiful neighborhood, and it's where I go or we go for refuge and to relax. I don't wanna have to worry about a business right next door to me. The current owner of the house has lived there less than a year. I feel the plan all alone was, all along, was to create the short-term rental. And that is insulting to me. I live here. I mow lawns. I have my family come visit. I don't bring strangers into the home and expect for them to follow rules that are posted on a door or on a wall. If there is a problem, yes, we can call the police. If there's a problem the next time, yes, we can call the police. But what is my protection? What is our protection for our investment that we and so many of our neighbors came in on the ground floor of? What is, where is our protection? We are so close to a school, and that really does concern me. As someone who's worked in child advocacy, we know the problems that can happen when you don't know who is in your neighborhood. I am concerned about the proximity of our houses to each other. Our houses are very close to each other. And I'm also concerned that this changes the intent, the purpose, and the established current use of our neighborhood. I've personally reached out to several of our neighbors, and at least one is here today, and several have voiced their opposition. We've contacted our friends and asked their opinion as well. The fact that our neighborhood has come out in opposition should be a clear sign to the commission that we do not wanna change what is a consistent neighborhood of family and fun and safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Martha Flores, my husband, Representative, my husband, Jose Flores. We live on 6017 Terlingua Street. Everything that, that everybody has said here, I am in agreement with them. We have been in this house for 10 years, and it is an investment for our family, and we don't want to see this disrupt. You know, if I wanna make a business, I will go somewhere where I can, you know, is, is related like that, like a, a business area. And this is a residential home area, and I would like to keep it like that. You know, I like to, my grandmother, I like to feel that my granddaughter is safe to be outside, whether it's in the front or in the backyard or in the alley, you know, and not be worried about who's next, you know, of our home, looking at her or any of us. We like to go out and walk at night, and we feel safe, and we would like to keep it like that. I am against, we are against this change, and I hope that all of you can understand that this is our way of living. This is our neighborhood, you know. I don't know if any of you live there, but this is our home, you know, and we would like to keep it like that. Don't disrupt our way of living. Please, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Craig Shaw of 6010 Terlingua, there is something I forgot to say, and I wanna make this on the record. This is, has nothing to do with any ill will or animosity toward the current owner. My wife's comments are true about his owning it for less than a year, but the owner has taken care of the property and shared expenses with me on a common fence line repair. So our opposition has nothing to do with any personal vendetta or anything like that. I just wanna make that clear and put that on the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Morning. My name is Josh Plissant. I'm the current owner of 6006 Terlingua, and I currently live at that property. One thing I wanted to bring up about this specific property is its proximity to the airport. Our intent with this property is not to have some sort of like party, vacation house. What we're really wanting to target is business people that are coming to our city. I think that this house would offer an upscale, you know, short-term living arrangement for a lot of these people. We're planning on pricing this property at a point that's going to really mitigate an undesirable element from coming into this property. We're gonna manage it ourselves. This is something that we're gonna really be very hands-on. I understand the concerns of, of my neighbors, but I just wanna assure everybody that we're gonna run a really top-notch operation here. And we're gonna do a very good job of making sure that this is not something that turns ugly and upsets our, our fellows and angelins. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak on this case? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add, you know, it just, it just came to my mind. When we built this house, because we built it, we signed a contract. When we built it, we signed a letter that says that we could not even rent it out. And why is now they're pursuing to change it to short-term rentals? Our builder was, Daniel Wetter, it was Sierra Vista Constructions, and we signed a letter prohibiting for us to rent it out to anybody else.
Okay.
So, I mean, consider that. I mean, why? If somebody's gonna rent it for a year or two, why are we gonna allow somebody just going for a weekend, you know?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close public comment. You know, we, we had a case come through, I guess, last month or the month before that was across the street from Santa Rita. I expressed my concerns about its proximity to the school-owned land at that time, and I feel the same way about this one. I think the city council's indicated that they're gonna probably look at this. So I don't, I don't know what impact approving this might have in the future. But I think, given its proximity alone, I, I can't support it.
I just wanna comment on that real quick, Chairman. I, I understand the concern with this school as well, and I appreciate that being in the notes for us to consider. But I think it's something that we need to be very careful about, considering it has not been something that's added for us to consider. about, considering it has not been something that's added for us to consider for approval.
Yep.
So, you're essentially, we've approved or considered short-term rentals that were close to or near a school, and you're now, you're now encouraging us to consider something that the city hasn't added as a consideration. I think you need to be really careful with that from our perspective of procedural due process issues. I also think it's important to note that I, we've heard a lot of opposition on a lot of different rentals, and I, for one, completely understand the concern about neighbors, but I also think it's really important to note that there is a process for reapproval and for conveying opposition if there's issues within the property and that kind of thing. So, I just want to, I think it's important to say that if the properties are approved, and I'm not saying just this one in particular, there is, there is a process for reapproval, and it's not just a blanket stamp and forever, this is, this is an okay situation. But I just think it's something we're not taking enough time for, for those that take their time to come here to say, hey, even if this is approved now, it's certainly up for reconsideration within a year and whatnot. So, I think it's just important to mention that period. I also wanted to mention that one of the opposition letters that we received, those individuals don't even live in San Angelo anymore. So, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration as well.
I want to piggyback off of that.
Yeah.
There is a process in it, whereas you don't go through that process on just a general rental.
Rental. Or even whoever purchases your.
Which is longer than 30 days. I mean, he could have rented it out. He didn't build it. He didn't sign the paper. He, I mean, and that's more probably a homeowners association or something.
Deep restrictions or something else.
But someone could come in there and rent it out as a long-term rental. We have no jurisdiction. We have no say-so. You can call and complain all you want, but they can continue to rent it out. Whereas with this process, if there's a complaint and it comes up for renewal, we don't renew it. It stops then. So, that's, it has added protections, even though it's short-term.
Absolutely. The other, the other important notes here, properties like this don't rent unless they're well-maintained.
True.
There's, there's a, there's a two-way feedback and review. So, the renters and the property owners are reviewed on the sites that, that these properties are listed on. And yes, we do have, we've talked about the protections that we've tried to put in place. This was a lengthy process of debate and discussion about short-term rentals when it came through originally. So. Okay. Anyone else have thoughts?
Well, I just would like to just add to this, that back when this process happened, I was on that particular committee, and it was a year-long process. When you first do something like that, sometimes you miss things, you don't think of things. But I do know that in talking with the mayor recently, that this is a big issue with her, and she wants it to be maybe reviewed again.
Yes.
I don't know when that process would happen. There's many of these questions that we've heard today from those that spoke that are, especially like being close to a school. What does that do? Is it a business? Things like that. So, I think some of that's going to be answered, but we don't have that today. It meets all the criteria, but I'm like you, I don't like it being even 1,090, 904 square feet.
From a school.
From a school.
Yep.
Just having, that's just input for those present.
I think there is a catch-22, because I agree with the whole school issue, but in a few past rentals or STRs that were directly across from the school, those were approved, you know?
So, what happens if the council says that it can't be within a certain distance?
Well, it only, I mean, theoretically, it would only apply to future rentals. Yeah.
What about renewal?
You can't make the law apply backwards.
When you come back for a renewal in a year, would that have to be a part of the renewal?
It would, and that would be a discussion we would have when that ordinance comes forward, is would those, would we want to grandfather those and allow them to continue, or would they be revoked at the very next opportunity for renewal? That's something that I think we would have to address in the ordinance. I will note, I was going to mention this in director's report, but since it may be relevant to this, that one that was approved across from Santa Rita Elementary was appealed. There was significant opposition.
Yes.
I can't predict how council would have decided, but based on their comments, it's very likely it might have been overturned and revoked or denied. But as part of that discussion, they, it was withdrawn. Just to be clear, the applicant has decided to sell the property and not operate a short-term rental. But as part of that discussion, the city council did direct us to take a look at the ordinance and look at limitations. I think their suggestion was within 500 feet of a school, but that's something that will be discussed. So, they did raise a concern about proximity to schools. And so, again, you're right, that's not part of this current ordinance, but as a discretionary decision on conditional uses, you can factor that into your decision.
Okay. On that note, does anyone wish to make a motion?
I mean, this one is hard, because, I mean, it follows the guidelines, but there is a lot of neighborhood opposition, and as we've discussed, the potential school issue, if that does get passed, you know, we've seen the neighborhood opposition out at Lake Nazworthy come through, and then goodness, it was probably a year, year and a half ago, I believe, over on Scarlet Oak, that there was an overwhelming amount of neighborhood opposition. So, I don't know. This one's tough.
I understand there's opposition, but it meets, it doesn't, there's nothing saying they can't do it.
That's right.
So, I'll make a motion to accept as approved, as presented.
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So, that's two opposed.
Three.
Three opposed. Four in favor. Four, three. It passes.
I don't think so.
Okay. Discussion items. Discussion of potential future changes to the subdivision ordinance to allow more preliminary Platts and final Platts to be approved administratively without review by the Planning Commission per Texas House Bill 3699.
Yeah, and actually, I'll, I'll go up there.
You got a bad seat?
So, this is really just an update, but also to see if you have any, any comments and direction for us as we work on this ordinance. But there was a change to the state law. As you know, most Platts have to come before you all for approval. However, Platts are considered ministerial. If they meet the ordinance, you have to approve. There's no discretionary decision-making on your part. And so, the state has changed those, those rules to allow most Platts to be approved administratively. That would take a change to our ordinance. Few Platts would still have to come to you all either way. That would be certain residential replats that do require a public hearing before you all. So, basically, the question that we're posing to get some feedback is, we would likely recommend most Platts to be done administratively. That way, that saves some significant staff time. It would save you all time at meetings for things that are typically routine. Couple of questions I think we would have is, I think you all have had some discussions on preliminary Platts and especially the larger ones that show kind of future development areas. So, that might be a consideration of certain, at least larger preliminary Platts. I think our biggest concern is the small Platts splitting one lot into two, or like we saw today, combining two lots into one. Those are pretty straightforward, and I don't know that they need to come to you all each month. So, again, we're working on that ordinance change. We hope to bring it as soon as next month. But before we do that, if you had strong feelings as a commission on certain types of Platts or preliminary Platts you'd like to continue to see before you, we'd like to hear that.
So, what is the nature of the bill?
It basically changes the wording to say, where it used to say, and this goes into effect, I believe, September 1st, where it used to say Platts, with the exception of what are called administrative Platts, usually four lots or less and meet certain conditions, no triggers of water, sewer requirements, or road improvements, all other Platts have to be approved by either Planning Commission or City Council. In our ordinance, we've made it the Planning Commission. They basically eliminated that to say, all Platts, with the exception of the ones that require a public hearing, can be approved by staff. So, we could change our ordinance to say, all Platts, with those few exceptions, can be reviewed and approved by staff and won't, won't come to you all. I should clarify, though, that even if we go that direction, if an applicant is not happy with staff's decision, they would then be able to appeal it to you all. So, it's not like our decision is final. If we can't have, you know, if we can't come to an agreement with the applicant, they would still have the ability to bring that to you all for consideration.
So, on a Platte that's really straightforward, and there's, it's, they're following the ordinances, and it's simple, and it's a couple of lots, I understand the, the convenience of allowing the staff to review and approve. I am concerned, though, about, I mean, if there's variances, if you've got a, if you've got a road variance issue or.
Yeah, and that's an exception I didn't mention, but I should have. Any of them that would require a variance would still come to you all.
Would still come to us.
Right.
Well, John, I think it's when it's a replat that requires a variance. So, if it's an initial Platte, is that your understanding that?
I think that could be a discussion.
Yeah.
We could write it in a way that staff, I think, my opinion is, though, at least, if it triggers a variance, we could perhaps write the ordinance to say that we could approve it, and it wouldn't come to you all. I think at this point, my preference would be that they still come to you if it triggers a variance.
I think, I think that makes sense. This is, this is kind of a slippery slope. It's, it's a little bit dangerous, and it's not that I don't trust you guys, it's that mistakes can happen. And if we don't see it, then we have no way of identifying the issue before it, before it moves on down the road.
I think it's also, it gives the surrounding neighborhoods and developed areas an opportunity to learn more about it, to come here, voice their concerns.
Very good point.
And instead of it just getting.
But remember, only residential replats or Platts, at least some with variances, trigger any sort of notice at all. So, nine times out of 10, the Platts you see, no notice has been sent out to surround.
We're going to see it if it's been noticed, if it would be required to be noticed, is what you're saying.
Basically.
Yeah.
Right. Otherwise, it could be administrative, and you wouldn't.
My concern would be if there's conditions that the staff was requesting, and the applicant doesn't understand that they can appeal it if they don't agree to it. I feel like you're, it's almost road-blocking some of those applicants, because they don't understand the entire process. I mean, we've gone over that multiple times, that sometimes the way that the city explains something to the average citizen that does not do this every day is overwhelming, confusing, you know? So, that would be my concern, is that they, they don't know the next step. Even if you say, yeah, you can appeal it, they, you know, how many of them would?
I will say that Platts are required to be done by an engineer or licensed surveyor, so we don't get the mom and pop that come in with a Platte. Now, they, they may be the ones behind the Platte, but I would say 95, maybe 98% of our Platts come from one of our local engineering firms, and so they clearly understand the process.
Right.
And so, I don't have, I understand the sentiment behind that, but I really don't have a concern. We go back and forth with them on conditions, and again, if we approve with some conditions that they don't like, they always have the ability to bring that to you all, and I'm quite sure Russell and Erica would take advantage of that.
Right.
When it was needed.
Okay. Anyone else have thoughts they want to share?
I just have a question. So, this bill, 36, the House Bill 3699, is this giving the opportunity for planning commissions to make this change? Excuse me. Or is that bill saying this is the change?
No, it would give us that opportunity. I mean, we're still bound by whatever ordinance the city council has adopted. This gives us the ability to change that and make them administrative. And as I'm sure you know, but the city council would be the final decision-maker on any of those changes to the ordinance.
Let's see what he brings.
Yeah. See what it looks like.
Okay. Yeah, we'll likely bring a draft to you. We're hoping next month and September. If not, it'll definitely be October.
Okay.
When you bring that draft, can you also bring the legislation, the language from the legislation as well, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. So, public comment, issues or concerns not on the regular agenda, they may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address comments to the dais, begin by stating their name and address, single member district, limit remarks to less than three minutes. I received an email, and I think the rest of the Planning Commission probably received it. I don't know if the staff has got a copy, but I've, I've run copies for everyone here in case you haven't seen this. There's a case that came through in March where we had a subdivision Platte that we agreed to, adjusting some setback requirements on. It looks like the Platte was not recorded as we had discussed in our meetings, and specifically the rear setback, which we discussed specifically in the meeting, was, was not written in the ordinance the way that we had discussed and agreed to. And I'm, obviously, I'm concerned about this. I'd like to, I guess my first comment is, you know, as a, as a member of the Planning Commission, it's frustrating to, to go through two meetings with, with citizens that have voiced their concerns about a specific case, and to work diligently with those folks and try to reach a resolution, and then, you know, they, they walk out thinking that everything's great, and it's been resolved, and now we have a circumstance where what's been done is not what we discussed. And so, can you guys shed some light on what happened, and how do we avoid this in the future?
Yeah, the short answer is that was an oversight by a staff member. Should have said 20 feet, and it said 10 feet in the document that went to city council. We've reviewed all of that. We've determined that, in fact, it was, what you all thought you were approving and what the city council thought they were approving was the 20 feet.
Right.
Regardless of the 10 feet being in the ordinance that was before them. And so, that's been corrected.
Okay.
We have, there, there were six permits issued.
Yes.
Within that area. One of them was compliant, so not an issue. Five of them have a rear setback that are less than 20 feet.
Okay.
The building official has submitted, or has initiated stop-work orders to those properties, and basically have, we've told them, they either need to come back with new plans that comply with the 20 feet, or they need to seek a variance from the zoning board of adjustment to allow less than the 20 feet. So, it's unfortunate that that mistake propagated.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, our staff issuing the permits looked at that ordinance that said 10 feet. That's what they told the builder, and so, you know, had the builder known it was 20 feet, they probably would have complied with the 20 feet.
Right.
So, we've done our best to rectify it. Again, I don't remember for sure. It's either only one or two of the properties where, I think it's only one, where the foundation has been poured. They've started doing the grading work. So, I guess the good news is that.
Caught it early.
There's been no, no vertical construction on any of the homes.
Yeah.
And so, we've, we caught it early and are trying our best to resolve it.
The problem is that it's still time and money that the builders now having to reinvest. I mean, I don't know if you understand the amount of dirt work preparation and cost that is for a developer, you know? And again, I mean, we're, our costs are escalating out of control right now on any build, whether it's north side, south side, it doesn't matter where in San Angelo. And so.
And so the fact that this was permitted, I feel, even though, yes, we did, you know, have this discussion, I feel like it's completely unjust to the builder at this point, because he was issued permits by the city.
Well, let me add one more thing that I didn't mention. Given the location of those homes, per their deed restrictions, the builder is required to submit plans to the homeowners' association and get those approved.
Hold on, John. I would love to know how many builders in Bentwood have ever provided plans to, like, because I guarantee you, there's, let's say there's 10 builders, nine out of 10 of them have never provided those, nor have homeowners doing additions or anything like that, because Bentwood does not have that oversight. They don't. You know, they can say they do in their restrictions, but they don't.
I think the homeowners' association and the deed restrictions are a totally separate issue from what, you know, we as Planning Commission have to be concerned with. And that's the fact that we had two meetings and delayed the further development for 90 days, basically, to come to a resolution with the developer and the neighbors. Everyone agreed, and we, you know, what got filed is not at all what we discussed.
And I don't believe that a member of the public should be harmed when there's an accuracy on the part of, whether it be our commission or the staff. I just don't think that that's something that should be done as far as, as you said. I'm sorry. They had choices of going and asking the ZBA board for a variance, and I think that that's something that needs to be handled among us and staff taken care of. I don't think the builder should be having to go through hoops to fix what wasn't done correctly.
I second what Candy said, and I think that's my biggest concern here, is that, you know, great that you fixed it, I mean, the typo, but it costs somebody a lot of money, and it's from people who are trying to follow the rules and follow the process. And I think there's a lot of people who don't do that, and so that's where my main concern goes. And then, you know, my, I'll be very direct here, and I know I'm new here, but my first meeting, we had a roomful of people here, and half of the stuff that was presented in front was wrong.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just, I think that has to be corrected, because that reflects on this commission and the City Council, and that, we have nothing to do with that. And so, you know, we're the ones that are getting these emails and are getting, are being held accountable by the community when it's a matter of double, triple-checking your work. And there's like a famous quote by John Wooden that says, you know, "It takes twice the time and twice the money to correct a mistake that you could have just caught the first time," so.
And if we could do something like that for this one that had been done incorrectly because of the 10 feet being told, they are probably, their builder, aware of that now and won't do the rest of them in that manner. They will do according to what the ordinance actually said.
Well, and that, so, and that's the real issue. We've got a builder that's incurred costs, and there was a mistake, obviously, in what was filed. Is it fair to allow them to go to the ZBA and obtain a variance because of the cost that they've incurred that then violates what we agreed to and discussed in this meeting about setbacks? It kind of flies in the face of, you know, the confidence that the community has in us and in the city. I mean, it's "fair and consistent" is kind of my mantra up here, and I try, I try hard to be fair and consistent with all of the decisions that I make. And that's what frustrates me the most about this case.
I guess maybe we just need to take longer and go over it two or three more times. I'm sorry. No, I understand both sides of that.
Yeah.
Because it's a challenge. Sorry. I've heard it frustrating.
Nobody's perfect. There are mistakes that are made.
It's a challenge getting stuff done.
Yes.
There's also a big turnover in the faculty.
Yes.
And that's a challenge both ways.
Yep.
There's also, the builders want to move faster. They want to get those homes built. I understand that. So it's a double-edged sword. I'm not taking either side. I understand both sides. The builder shouldn't inquire that cost because it was a mistake, but at the same time, too, you know, people are human.
Yes, sir.
MD5. I'm an attorney. I represent Contra Valley Construction, the builder that we're talking about. And I think Luke is right. There's, I'm here just to ask a couple clarifying questions to what Mr. James said. You said you rectified it, but my understanding is, there was an ordinance that was passed on the second reading of City Council. And according to my reading, and there are smarter lawyers in this room than me, but Chapter 12, Exhibit A, Article 2, Section 210, Subsection G, says amendments to a PD ordinance. "Any amendments to the terms and conditions of an approved PD district ordinance shall be subject to review and recommendation in accordance with provisions set forth in subsections A through F above, i.e. the procedure to enact or approve the PD." So if a PD is approved, an ordinance is filed, you can't go in, by my reading of this, and white out something on Exhibit A. You would have to redo it. So on the day that the building permits were approved, they were approved based on the PD that was approved, right or wrong, incorrect or correct, that went to the Planning Commission, that had a first reading in April at the City Council meeting, that nobody caught in the agenda package to the City Council, a second reading in May on the consent agenda, and by my review and a simple search on the city's website, you can look at the agenda packages for the City Council. The ordinance as it was passed was in both those agenda packages. I'm not putting blame on anybody. I've watched all the YouTube videos. This is not that. I'm looking at it as the box of, there was a valid ordinance, and now you're saying it's been rectified, permits pulled, but it hasn't gone back through the process to be amended to the true intent of the situation. So I just wanted some clarification questions.
So what you're telling us is that the ordinance that the builder is following is, right now, the law until it's amended back to the 20 feet. But because it was passed by the City Council, which is, you know, trumps us, in essence, that is what should be followed until it's amended.
I'm not opining to the legalness of a city document. What I'm saying is, there is an ordinance that was passed.
Correct.
So that's the, for lack of a better term, the fresh document. There's an ordinance for a PD that covers 24 lots, and that ordinance was passed in the correct steps according to the code of the City of San Angelo for a planned development. There's a lot of hoops you've got to jump through. So when the City Council on its consent agenda in its May meeting passed that, that ordinance, per my reading of the code, controls those 24 lots.
Which is the 10 feet.
Correct. I'm not saying if it's right, wrong, and different. I'm saying that document controls, so therefore, builder goes, gets a permit, permit's approved, builder builds. It's as simple as that. So now that somebody finally caught it, there's a mechanism to amend a PD laid out in the code. And so I'm not, by rectifying the situation would be, you're amending what has been passed, so therefore, in order to amend it, you've got to go back through the hoops. So if what I'm hearing, and that's why I want to come up for some points of clarification, if it's rectified and permits are pulled, why are the permits pulled if the rules governing those 24 lots are what's in the PD that was passed through the process? Whatever happened before that, that's before my time. I'm just talking about ordinance on the books, building permits issued, builder builds, from a city and Planning Commission and City Council and Building Department perspective.
You need to address council that. Why, they got presented something different than what we have presented. I'm just saying.
And that's really...
That's not really our decision.
That's not what I'm arguing, is, I'm not arguing whether the right ordinance was presented to City Council.
Right.
It's just the ordinance that was presented.
Yeah.
Right, wrong, and different.
Yeah.
It wasn't, quote, "caught" at the April meeting, it wasn't, quote, "caught" at the May meeting. So now that's what controls unless...
Unless you go back through the process to make the amendments.
Right. Because there's a specific section in the code of ordinance that's...
You can't just change a document because, oh, oops, we made a mistake. You have to go back through the process to make the amendment.
The counter to that is that in Bentwood, it breaks the building ordinances for that property. So there's two conflicting documents. One of them that was passed, and the other one says that if you build in Bentwood, you have to follow these restrictions. And as a homeowner, you agreed to that. So that's where the conflict is, in my mind, is, yes, we have an ordinance that's conflicting with an HOA, and I don't have an answer to that.
Well, and let me jump in, and Brandon may want to jump in, too. I think we're verging on a discussion on an item that's not posted on the agenda, and so I don't want to get too into that.
I understand.
I think we can have this discussion outside of this room with this particular applicant. I don't want to get into the legal rationale for what the decision was made and why. I think we can resolve that, but like you said, that's not your purview, and
Yeah.
I, we can possibly update this board in the future on the details of how that happened, but while this is still maybe somewhat in flux, I don't want to hash this out in a public setting in front of this meeting, on an item that's not on the...
I respect and understand that, and I agree to a point. The point that, the reason I raised this point to begin with is the mistake that was made. And I know mistakes are made, we're all human, errors occur, but as Michelle pointed out, we've had a lot of turnover with staff. It just doesn't feel like we're getting all of the review and careful consideration of the business that's coming out of the Planning Department. And I'm just, I'm begging you guys to put another set of eyes on it and look carefully at what's coming out so that we don't have this mistake going forward.
Well, and maybe my last comment on this. Hopefully, you have noticed the last, this meeting, the most recent meeting, past meeting...
Yes.
Has been different.
Yes.
Powerpoints have been correct.
Much better.
Staff reports have been correct.
Yes.
And so I just want to point out that we also recognize some of those concerns and have done things to try to address that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
My comment, too, at the end here, is Derek's point about what has been formally approved by the City Council. I don't believe that this group, our commission, or the staff can just go arbitrarily rectify it or fix it. I think it needs to go back through the process and be an amendment if we, you know, whatever might have happened, it just needs to be amended. But taking that into consideration, I still do not believe that, at this point, that builder needs to be harmed over the mistake made.
I agree.
And I think it needs to go back to the beginning process for review of an amendment.
Just in summation for clarity, because I can be dense sometimes, but in the open meeting, it was said prior to me coming to the podium, that it has been rectified and permits that were valid based on what was passed have now been denied for some reason, and that the builder is now forced to go through another process even though the amendment to the ordinance has not gone through the formal process.
And I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't believe that it needs to be said and done.
Yeah, and that's out of our purview. I agree.
I just want clarification. Thank you.
Guys, this is a public comment section.
It is.
So, I mean, right now, especially with the threat of a lawsuit in this email that was passed around, my advice to staff is not to engage in a question and answer right here, but we can commit to Mr. Darby, the applicant, the builder, to get back to them with more detail.
Perfect. Thank you, Brandon.
And for the record, neither me nor my clients have threatened a lawsuit, so I don't know where that information's coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
Thank you.
All right. That's all I had on the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion to dismiss?
Oh, I do have a couple of things under the Director's Board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, John.
Real quick, I mentioned the STR by Santa Rita being withdrawn. Council did direct us to look at that ordinance. We hope to bring that to you next month as well, so we may have a couple of ordinances for you to review next month. The last thing, I want to introduce Olga Truman, our newest planning tech.
Hi.
Glad to have her on board. So now our planning staff is, the lower-level planning staff is full. We're still vacant the planning manager position, but in the process of hopefully have that out and hopefully get some good applicants on that.
Really quick, just when I was clicking around on the website, I did notice that the members have not been updated in quite some time. Terry's still on there. I mean, so we def...
And Sam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need to get that resolved if it hasn't been. Did it, okay. That was as of like Friday, so, okay.
All right. I think that's all we've got, guys.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Seven zero, it's 12:12.